Good afternoon. My name is Raymond Skinner and I'm chairman of the DCHA Stabilization and Reform Board, and I call this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority being held today, October 11th, 2023. This meeting is being held via WebEx video conferencing and the board is here in person. The time is 1:03 PM. As usual, I'd like to first ask for a moment of silence to allow for personal reflection. Thank you. This is a regular monthly meeting of the board and we invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website, or those who would just like to view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA website link to Facebook Live. The Board of Commissioners welcomes constituent input and offers you today an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of the meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are asked to speak, and you do not use the chat to comment when it's not your turn to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct or loud threatening or abusive language during the meetings. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from this virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future board meetings. We appreciate your interest in the matters before us today and thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. At this time, I'd like for a roll call vote to determine a quorum.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson? Commissioner Burrbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Clay?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? Chairman Skinner?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like the commissioners to consider the minutes of the September 13th, 2023 board meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been approved as presented. So at this time, we're going to make a change in the agenda that was presented, and we're going to first go into executive session to discuss initiatives. So I'm going to recommend to the board that the board go to close this meeting pursuant to DC Code 2575B4A and B10 to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, performance evaluation, compensation, discipline, demotion, removal or resignation of government employees, appointees or employees or officials, and to conduct and to consult with an attorney to obtain legal advice and to preserve the attorney-client privilege between an attorney and this public body. Is there any discussion before closing the meeting? At this time, we'll take a roll call vote to close the meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
I agree. Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm sorry, and Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, your floor has voted unanimously for those who are present to go into executive session.
So we will go into executive session and reconvene at 1:35. The general public will be convening at 1:35. And now the meeting is closed. The executive session. Thank you.
Chairman, floor is yours.
Good afternoon. We are reconvening the District of Columbia Housing Authority Stabilization and Reform Board Board of Directors meeting on Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. The time is now 1:41 PM. The next item on the agenda is the Executive Directors Report, and I'm going to ask our interim Executive Director, Director Jenkins, to give his report.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this is a wee report this month. As you guys have all received your board reports, which are similar to what we did last month. We took your feedback and I hope we were able to incorporate everything that you requested, and we're still open for additional feedback. Well, we'll see on going forward on how we can approve this. But each of the directors this month are going to step up and speak to their particular departments, synthesizing what was in the board report that was submitted to you. And I believe first up, we're going to start with our Chief of Staff. Jenna.
So we're going to do some HUD updates. As we previewed with the Operations Committee last week, HUD has delayed implementation of Inspire, which is the inspections protocol that we talked about last month, and HATMA, which makes some changes to the eligibility and recertification processes for our programs. We're taking this additional time that they had given us and using it to delay and to put more thought into the revisions of our admin plan and our ACOP. And so we had originally planned to bring that to you in our revised format in December, but are now planning to do that early next year in March. Before then, it includes public engagement, including publication in the register for people to review, and on our website, a public meeting, lots of community engagement. Folks have asked if, what if the government shuts down, what impact there would be on the Housing Authority? The short answer to that question is, in the short term, there would be no impact because of the way our budget operates. Beyond that, we would work with HUD if there were any impacts to handle. We also continue continuing to work with HUD on the three reviews that they're doing with us, both the 2022 onsite assessment, the FHEO review, and also the rent reasonableness review that they initiated in recent months.
Could you go into a little more detail about the rent reasonableness review, where they are on that? Because the letter we received said they were looking at whether the landlords, I believe, had done something wrong.
So it's a little bit of a continuation of what was in the 2022 assessment. So they asked us for a variety of records around how much we are paying landlords and our methodology for determining rent reasonableness. So some of the things that we submitted were things that we had previously submitted to HUD. We then met with them, refined the ask, and have been going back and forth with them a little bit on what we're providing and what timeline. So we have one or two more things that we owe to them, and then I presume they will reconvene after they review those.
Do you have any sense of kind of where they're going with this, you know, what specifically they're kind of looking for?
I don't. I don't know that they're looking for anything different than they identified in the first review. One of the things that came up in our conversation with them was just the nexus between rent reasonableness and rent control and rent stabilization. So that was the only sort of new element from the previous review. They also talked about media coverage in our meeting and following up on some of the stories they had read in the paper.
Just to add on, we did clarify with them, because there was talk about recapturing money from owners if the contract rent we had established for those half contracts exceeded the submarket rents, and we advised them this is different than a multifamily side where the housing authority entered into a contract with these owners. So that would not be possible for them to recoup money directly from owners. That would be a housing authority responsibility if in fact we paid more than the submarket rent as contract rents. So we clarified that for them as we're sending them over data, as they continue to request data, as we continue to send that over, we're clarifying who's responsible for this. Thank you.
Jenna, a question. I think we all had hoped that at some point there would be this magic moment where HUD would come forward and say, okay, you're in the clear now. And it seems like, because a lot of things that are outside of our control, well, let me step back. First, we've submitted everything to them that they've asked us to, and that then now that there's a number of things that are beyond our control that we're having to adapt to because they've changed some things, that that has been, that notion that somehow there's this imminent clearance from HUD is probably something that we should not expect, and that it's more of a kind of a slow-moving process. HUD does not seem acutely concerned. Obviously, they have expressed concerns about the agency, but they don't seem acutely concerned about anything in particular at this moment in time. So I just want to manage all of our expectations. Is that fair? We should just sort of play this out and it will happen in due course, but we shouldn't expect some magic moment?
I think that that's fair. I think we, when Dr. Jenkins started, he reached out to them and said, let's talk. And I know that we've done the same thing with the incoming executive director, and so I think that everything else you said is probably right on.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Just to add on, we do have a meeting set with them in a couple of weeks where we're going to go over where we are with the review and our responses, so we should have more clarity on what they're thinking and what direction the agency can go in afterwards, after that meeting. And that meeting is supposed to include Chairman Skinner and Keith, if he's able to attend. If he's not able to attend, I'm going to attend either way and take notes and bring information back for him if he's not able to attend.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Public housing. Nona, she's on the screen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is September 2023 Public Housing Property Management Operations Report. I'm excited to say that we are at 75.24%. So we are up roughly by 1.29%. Don't want to get too particular, but that is an increase, so the team has been working hard in reference to that. Currently, we have 1,953 total vacant units. We have 5,478 total units occupied, and we have 631 in modernization. As you know, those are the units that HUD allows us to take offline when we have some type of major unit turnaround that we're doing in reference to make-ready units and those that are pending some type of demo disposition. And then we have 116 units as offline for administrative uses, resident council offices, MTW police officer units, and we have 64 units ready for lease. We have 1,900, almost 2,000 families.
Let me ask before you go on. So of the 1,953 total vacant units, is it correct to say that only 74 are ready to lease of those 1,900?
Correct. I actually have somebody, as of today, that's correct. I actually have somebody that started in our department today. In the next two weeks, they'll actually be walking those 1,900 units to give us a good assessment in reference to what we have available, in reference to make-ready, and they'll be responsible for actually making the turn in the system, a switch, in reference to that. So what could happen is that we can have more than that available, but because we don't have a turn from make-ready to ready, then it shows that we have a lot more vacancies and only 74 available for leasing. Do you guys follow that?
Sorry.
Get that. So what will happen is that in the system, right, so we pull a vacant unit report. So in a vacant unit report, it may say vacant, not ready. So we count that as 1,900 units that are vacant, right? But I may have 10 or so or more than that actually ready for leasing, but it doesn't show it in the system. I need everything in YARDI to reflect the actual status of the unit so we can account for it properly.
This is Commissioner Harris. So are we saying that until someone is physically able to verify those units that are ready but not ready?
Well, no. Let me see if I can clarify. We have 74 that we know that we can lease. Although those that we don't know, we want to confirm that they're either not ready or ready. So as we walk through them, we're going to confirm the status of them and update YARDI so we have a clearer picture on what is ready to lease.
That's what I was saying. So physically has to go check the others outside of 74.
We don't want to confirm, because we were reporting numbers. To be honest, we've been reporting numbers, and we didn't want to continue to report numbers unless we put eyes on it. So we have quasi-project manager now, known as a sign. You go do this, let us know exactly where we are, so we can ensure that these numbers are accurate that we're reporting now.
Yeah, what's the estimated timeframe that this will get done?
I actually gave them a deadline of the 25th of October. That's their first major assignment with the department.
It's a lot of units.
So that's to check all of these vacant units, to confirm that they're ready to lease or not, or not ready. Okay.
Correct. Most likely not ready. But there may be some that we've gotten ready that we just didn't track accurately.
Okay. Nona, quick question. Trying to always keep in mind, like, that there's an urgent needs campaign that's happening. Does that help fix some of these vacant units and get them ready? Is that a part of the urgent needs campaign scope of work?
So we looked at, those units have been reviewed, but those wouldn't count in the 1,900 vacant units. So the urgent needs, where we're actually having contractors go in and do immediate work of those that families are actually residing in.
Okay, so it's of the occupied needs units that the urgent needs campaign is focused on? Do we need a separate campaign for vacant units to prioritize fixing them?
So OCP has a set of contractors and so does PMO, so we're working jointly to get units turned.
We have already done that. To answer your question, we have prioritized that. Those units are the ones that we're looking to turn right away using a combination of PMO staff and our OCP staff.
Okay.
So we're using a combination vote.
Nona, can I ask a sort of a bigger picture question, I guess? I think, I mean, I know we're all frustrated at the pace of increase, and, you know, we seem to be hovering in the low to mid 70s and have for the last, you know, many months. And I know we had all hoped for a quicker uptick, especially given that we've done the, gone through the waiting list and gone through the eligibility checks, and now seem to have kind of a standing number of people who are waiting to be matched with units. Is, what is the number one thing that's holding us back from being able to match the people who have now been determined eligible who came off the waiting list with actual units? Is it that we don't know for sure whether the number of units that we think we might have available are actually in condition that they could be ready for move-in? Is that the, I'm just trying to understand why we've been at, you know, between 73 and 75 for a year plus.
Right. So that is a very good question. So we have to remember that there are a few priorities that are going on, right? So we have eligibility actually that moves the needle in reference to occupancy, right? But we also have to address the needs of the families that are currently in units, that are environmental conditions that are health and safety that we actually have to move. So let's say I had 100 units available, but if I have 70 families, and these are just examples, if I have 70 families that are currently in units that have health and safety issues, we have to address those first before I can actually address the ones off the waitlist. I know our policy says a five-to-one new admissions to transfers, but I can't leave new families, I mean, our current residents in units that are not up to standard.
But I guess, I mean, isn't that sort of a we can't walk and chew gum at the same time answer?
Well, I think it's, we are, when we get units available, we still have to transfer families into those who are currently in conditions that we don't want them residing in. So we're doing a twofold. These are running concurrently, but we don't want to continue to have people living in units that they should not be living in. So when they come due, we're looking at transfers and new admissions off the eligibility list.
I think it would actually be really helpful to add language and data around transfers to the slide because it, we're not reflecting the full work, the full scope of work that Nona and her team are doing, and it's not reflecting, it feels to me like what you're saying is, Nona is also trying to juggle and manage families that are in substandard conditions. We know that that's like one of the top complaints that we get. And so I think it would be super helpful to reflect that level of work that's happening so that we can show our constituents, we're prioritizing you in the current conditions, and that's why we can't.
Absolutely. That's in your actual board report, the more detailed report. That information on transfers is there. When you look at it, she shows all the transfers, both required and optional transfers, in more detail. So we can add, Nona, you can add that to your summary going forward, please, using the data that's in that detailed report that all of you received.
And I think, I mean, maybe what's, maybe I just need to get clear on this. I think what's a little misleading to me is this notion that we have 1,900 units that are in pristine condition that are just sitting out there and no one's bothering to place people in them, right? That is not what we're saying. What we're saying is we have 1,900 and some units in a current rate, in most cases, of disrepair, and so those need to be prepared to move in before we can.
We have 73 ready now, and those other 1,900 or so, we need to take a good inventory of those that are ready, that can make a quick turn, and those are going to take a longer time to repair.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right, moving to maintenance. So we have an average number of days to close routine work orders of 71. That's a large number. That's a high number. Our target is for us to close those routine within 21 days. We've been doing a lot of data cleanup in reference to work orders that have been addressed and they had not been closed. So we've been closing those out. We have 13, there are 13, on average, average number of days to close emergencies is 13. We're working to get that down to 24, and 42% of those work orders were closed within 24 hours.
Thank you for adding that number.
You also clarified that some of these work was done, but during our data cleanup, we didn't close it out timely. So they're going in and closing things out, which is skewing the numbers.
Right.
So what is going on? A lot of these, the work was done, but until we close the loop in YARDI, the reports are going to be skewed. Does that make sense?
All right, rent collection. So we're at 84% in reference to our TARS for the last three months, June, July, and August. We've been at 79%, 87%, and 84%. Our delinquency, 30-day delinquency is $833,000. 60 days, $175,000, and then 90-plus days is $640,000.
So, Nona, for the benefit of the public and probably some board members, what does TARS stand for?
Can you just, between the TARS and the delinquent rents, and what all goes into the TARS, Nona?
So TARS is tenant accounts receivables. In reference to delinquent rent, that's the amount of rent that's actually outstanding for those months. So 30 days is if that is, so based on this report, it's August, because we weren't, September reconciliation wasn't completed. So for the month of August, that 30-day delinquency is whatever was outstanding for the month of July. 60 days is two days out from that, and then 90 days out from that timeframe. And so it includes those dollar amounts that families owe across the board. So we do a reconciliation reference to rent itself, because that's just what is rent, and then what total amounts to actually do across the board. So for damages, and these are just examples. I don't want to say we charge it for damages, but in reference to damages, fees associated with repayment agreements, all goes into that dollar amount.
Commissioner Burrbridge, how accurate is that? Because one of the big problems we are having is that the tenants complain of not receiving the rent slips in time, and even when they're mailing that time that it takes where the rent really has been paid, but the record indicates that it has not been paid. So do that contribute to this delinquent rent status?
It could contribute to that. They will have to take an individual basis, and this is where I do my plug in reference to Rent Cafe, that I need my families for public housing to actually sign up for Rent Cafe where that amount can actually post to their account, and they don't have to send it off to Philadelphia.
Commissioner, that's why you're looking at June, July, and August numbers and not September, because we still have to reconcile September with some of those payments that have come in that have not been applied to the ledger. So we know these months are closed and these should be accurate, but we don't have complete data for September. Did everybody understand what the difference between TARS and rent collection? Because TARS could be outstanding charges that the tenant has.
Could you talk a little bit about Rent Cafe, what that is? Do we not need to know?
Rent Cafe is an aspect of YARDI. We can do some self-service. That gives the tenants the ability to do self-service, and we can do payments online.
The tenants can pay online.
It makes it streamlined. It makes it a lot faster. Right now, payments are going to a lockbox, and then that lockbox is opened, all those payments are reconciled, and then a file is sent here, and then our team posts them in YARDI. If they're using Rent Cafe, they're using PayPal, debit card, whatever, goes straight to their ledger.
So I don't know if you know this, what percentage of the tenants or residents are actually using Rent Cafe or some kind of electronic?
Nona, are we using it at all, or we just use it 100% lockbox?
We have, it's not 100% lockbox, but we don't have a lot of residents on there. Last count, it was like only 800 families were on Rent Cafe.
And question. Are the residents aware of it? Have they been trained for it? I mean, do they even know it exists? And if not, maybe there's something we can do with the resident councils to teach the residents, and that would be a little bit more efficient.
Correct. So property management staff, as families are coming into the office, they are having a conversation with them about Rent Cafe and signing them up for it. And I actually have a conversation with them by weekly in reference to the number of families they've actually gotten enrolled. So we can work with resident council in reference to, at the resident council meetings, which they should already be doing, is having a conversation about Rent Cafe.
Yeah, no, it sounds to me like we ought to have a more robust training program and, I guess, PR campaign. Let the residents know that it even exists and that we would like for them to use it. I mean, I don't think we can make it mandatory, because some may not have the capability.
Naturally, housing authorities have made it mandatory. Um, DC, that's a prior policy decision that you can make, whether if you wanna make it mandatory or not, or give some, some exceptions. But I absolutely agree that we should do a, a PR campaign, an ongoing one, to incentivize our owners and our families to get on, uh, the electronic payment, because it just streamlines the whole process. You guys have any questions for our PMO?
Thank you, Nona.
Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. So I think first on Rent Cafe, that's actually something that, we call it on our, and the participant portal. Um, and that is something that we've launched in the spring, early summer. But it's allowing voucher participants to also be able to register and to be able to view their information. With only viewing access at this point, so it's not, you know, they're not making payments directly to us. But what it will allow us to do when we get to the next phase is for actual recertifications and other transactions to happen. So we sent out letters, we sent out emails to everybody who's emails that we had, to kind of get them registered, to get them to start to, to know that there is a participant portal. So I think from the PR campaign, it's an, it's an agency-wide. Um, so on the voucher side, I think, you know, I, you all know that we have a very robust federal and a local program. What you're seeing before you is a screen that kind of gives you a big picture on the federal side. So the voucher program is one where you have to look at allocation in terms of number of vouchers that are estimated to be funded with a certain budget. The actual number of families that you can house really depends on what the actual costs are per household. So what you see at the top is the voucher allocation as, as it relates to the federal side. So sixteen thousand and the annual budget authority of two hundred and seventy. But when we look at per-unit costs and we project out our leasing capacity, as you can see, is much less than that. So instead of sixteen thousand, it's really more like twelve thousand five hundred. And from that, um, is what the, the next number below that is what you see as what are actual number of families that are, uh, that are actively housed right now. So it is a continual, you know, balance of how many families can we house? Based on attrition, how many new families can we bring in? So we have estimated that we have capacity to add about a thousand more families. And so that's what we've been doing. We, we partnered with our, um, with a vendor to help us increase capacity on the eligibility side. So they've been sending out, uh, letters. I know we announced that, you know, if you see a letter that says to mail your application to Kentucky, it's true, because that is where they're processing the applications. And so we have, uh, we have, uh, so far pulled about six thousand applications or applicants from the waiting list we're processing. We have, uh, maybe about thirteen hundred that have applications in process. We have over a hundred that are actually deemed eligible, so voucher issuances are about to happen. Like, it's, it's really kicking into high gear. Uh, but we also still have a good chunk of folks that have not yet responded, or the mail hasn't come back, or they haven't submitted anything. And that's about four thousand. So we're sending, you know, with the change to our admin plan, um, you know, we're gonna send out first notice, we're gonna send out second notice. But if there's no response, no start, no nothing, then they're gonna be moved off as the waiting list. And so this is part of what we're doing. I know we're also looking at doing, you know, instead of just doing a piecemeal where we're sending initial letters and then waiting till they respond or don't respond, is to also just do another outreach campaign for a waitlist update. So I think that's gonna be coming, um, coming soon, right? Um, but here's the number where you have on the, on the federal side. Uh, next slide is our.
Can you pause for a second?
Yes.
Does everybody understand, uh, is there any questions regarding the funding versus the units?
Well, my question was actually around, um, current utilization, which I think speaks to, you have, um, seven percent of the unit leasing capacity that isn't leased up, right? Like, that's, that ninety-three percent is the difference between twelve thousand five hundred and eleven thousand six forty. What is the budget utilization number?
Great question.
What, what is that? So eighty-three percent of what, though? Of the two hundred and seventy million dollars that you are currently utilizing?
Per-unit cost is much higher, just, the district is a high-risk, uh, area.
So there's always gonna be like a ten percent gap between like the current leasing utilization and the current budget, just because of how?
Just how much the, per family it costs versus. So we'll get to, we'll hit a hundred percent of our budget utilization before we hit the number. So if you, if you look at just the allocation, we'll never get to the allocation number, because we'll hit our budget. We'll exceed our budget before that.
Okay. And is that coming from HUD, that, the, the top row there?
Yeah.
They, they give us both the allocation and the budget, and I think for LRSP, they get, the council gives us, yeah. I mean, it is sort of striking that mismatch between the number of vouchers and what they, or sorry, the dollar amount and what they think that buys you versus the actual. And I guess it, it does to some degree open us up to sort of unfair criticism, that they're gonna say, w- we could be at twelve thousand five hundred here and pat ourselves on the back and say, we're basically a hundred percent. And then somebody else could come and second-guess us and say, look, you're almost four thousand, you know, two, you have four thousand more vouchers. And we would say, well, yeah, we'd give them a voucher for a dot, for zero dollars, right? So is there, I mean, I assume every housing authority.
Struggles with that.
Struggles.
Especially, uh, metro areas like ours.
Yeah. In high-cost areas, so I don't want, in case HUD's listening to all my questions here. How is the authorities control this? We control this by where we set our payment standard. We set our payment standard at a hundred and eighty-seven percent of the fair market rent, because we feel that allows our families to be successful in this area. If we were to reduce that, that would reduce our per-unit cost and allow us to lease more units of our budget authority.
If people could find those units.
So that's what that balance is. Every local housing authority has to do an analysis, which we're doing right now of our market, and make a determination on how many units we're going to lease based on the money that we have.
And I assume we think that a hundred and eighty-seven percent is the right number to allow people to actually, to incent landlords to work with us.
It's working currently. Um, honestly, we're doing it, honestly. We are, um, doing a market analysis currently, and we're looking to see if that number is the right number, or if it should be reduced or increased. Well, it won't be increased. We're looking to see if it's possibly reduced based on the analysis that we're doing. We're using affordablehousing.com, our partners, we're usually looking at our market rents, we're looking at fair market rents in our analysis, determine where's, where we should have our payment standards set. But as of right now, that is allowing our families to be successful from a financial standpoint. Uh, we still have the challenge of having an inventory of owners willing to lease to us.
Because I think the other balance too is maximizing choice. Because with the voucher program, you wanna be able to have them have as much opportunity as possible to be in the neighborhoods that they want with the amenities and features that they're seeking.
Quick question, I'm looking at the detailed report. The hundred and eighteen eligible, they're already, those are the pay, um, residents who are getting the voucher. They've already done the application, everything has been done. So the two hundred and ninety-five pending review, they haven't been deemed eligible yet.
Right.
Okay, I was trying to make that numbers make sense.
Yes.
Got it. So do we know if the one eighteen, are they in the process of looking for the houses, or have they already found?
The voucher issuances are happening and they're starting to look for houses, yes. And so one of the things that we're also doing in terms of, um, trying to help them to connect to housing, you know, of course, our inspection team is, you know, on the ready and standing by to, to do the inspections. But we're also gonna be able to, because of our, um, and we're able to do this is to use some funds to help with security deposits. So his, in recent years, it's really been, uh, only a resource that's available from the housing authority, uh, for the local side. But we're also gonna be able to assist especially new families, uh, with security deposits as well.
Do it. Sorry, one more question. I'm thinking about the recent Post article, which I know was more about the DHS vouchers, not our. But, but I assume that the inspection teams are the same teams that inspect for those. Do we track, how, how long does it take from when somebody says, I found a unit, can you please inspect it? How long does it take between then and when a unit actually gets inspected and it pro? And I guess initially, a lot of times they fail. But do we just track that, that number?
So it typically, when a, uh, once a landlord and a prospective tenant have connected, they fill what's called a request for tenancy application. That application comes in, it's about three to five days for that review to happen. And now with the rent reasonableness process added in, that, that's what happens at the outset. And then if it's checked off, it's, yes, it's affordable, yes, it's rent reasonable, then within three days is when the inspector or the inspection department would reach out to the landlord to schedule the initial inspection. So I think, you know, question of, like you said, whether or not the unit passes inspection on the first round. Sometimes we have to go back to do a second inspection and then the lease-up. So once a unit passes inspection.
So roughly, between when that match is made, it's roughly a week until the inspector reaches out to the landlord to say, can I, I'd like to schedule an inspection.
So I think within, and I think from beginning to lease-up is, you know, give or take about, it's about thirty days when you add in all of those things. Um, yeah, of course, when there are emergencies, we try to move faster. There are situations where, you know, maybe the landlord's not ready, or there's scheduling conflicts. So there are times when that timeline has not, has not met, or if the rent reasonableness didn't come back as accepted. And so there's some negotiation that has to happen. So, so there's a few different factors that can impact the actual timeline, but that is something that we're tracking.
When we met last week, I mean, last month, um, I think one of your slides was, um, talking about how to help expedite LRSP, that we would have staff at the housing authority that were dedicated to the LRSP process. Is it possible to dedicate inspectors as well as administrative staff for doing the LRSP application? So that we have a separate pipeline of like staff that are just dedicated to LRSP, helping us move that, um, and really, like, okay.
Yes.
Short answer is yes. Um, we're in the process right now of, of looking at that, what that looks like from a budgetary standpoint. So we have totally separate staff assigned to those particular functions on the federal and the local side. So we are doing that bifurcating the programs to, in an effort to make it more efficient.
Okay. And so then we could have a dedicated point of contact for escalating concerns related to inspections, the inspection process, contact for just our LRSP clients. Okay, that would be very helpful. I'm, the homeless services would be excited by.
Definitely moving in that direction now that we're, um, we're gonna be more data-driven. I apologize for the question.
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
Yes, um, one concern I have, you spoke about security deposits. What about application fees? Like, a person go through this whole process, some places are charging fifty, seventy-five, a hundred dollars. And I give you my hundred dollars, and then it doesn't pass through inspection, so I have to go here and I have to give another hundred dollars. That is a big handicap, a major handicap. I don't, I, I just wanted to throw that out.
Right.
Because sometimes that hurts a lot, and it stops a person becoming, you know, they're homeless.
Getting, getting to the point of, of, of security deposit.
I mean, do, do we have anything with these landlords that are dealing explicitly with housing? Where if this, you know, they, they, do they put a cap on it? Or kids, sometime you can pay five hundred dollars, you can pay more for in rent than in application.
Especially the more adults you have in the households.
Sadly, because you have to do one for each one.
Uh, I think that is a great question. One of the challenges with, you know, security deposits are easier to manage, because it's, it's family, one unit. It's at the time of lease-up, and you have the paperwork, application fees might be a bit more difficult to manage. Uh, but it is something, I know there's recent laws, changes in the laws, I'm not the lawyer here. But, uh, recent changes in the laws to cap application fees that the district has, has kind of taken on. Um, so I'm not, to what extent that's gonna help mitigate some of those things, uh, I'm not sure. But, but yes, I think we can, especially for the larger landlords, that may be an opportunity for, you know, say, hey, if it's a voucher applicant, then if there's a way that we can work out, because, you know, we won't be able to do a check or a cash or a credit card to, to pay like one by one for the, you know, many families that are out there, but if there's a way that we can work something out, uh, we'll definitely pose that to our partners.
We, we, we're looking at some NTW initiatives, and we can add that as a possibility, because we're already looking at a landlord mitigation fund. So we can add that as a possible initiative to add going forward to, uh, incentivize owners to work on the program and to lessen the burden on, uh, tenants' surges.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Hey, move on.
Yes, now we move on. So this is the local side. So here, what you see is, uh, we tried to lay it out similar way on the LRSP, this is the tenant-based side. Um, so allocation, a one point two, uh, that I wanted to make as far as, you know, when they make an allocation, it depends on what year that allocation is made and what that, the cost, estimated cost is then. But then the allocation, so it kind of compounds over the years. So, you know, the voucher allocation that was made in two thousand eight had, had an estimated budget of, you know, twelve hundred. But now if it's eighteen hundred for that same bedroom size, I think those are some of the ways that the costs change. Um, but what you'll see here is the, um, allocation on the tenant-based side. Up to the six thousand is the kind of cumulative number of, of vouchers that were allocated. A hundred and twenty-four is the, is the budget authority. And then again, we've got the leasing capacity, current utilization, uh, utilization based on leasing capacity, and then budget utilization. Now, these numbers do not include the, the vouchers that were, starting in FY twenty-two, there was a change in our budget structure. So there's funding that comes directly to the housing authority, but then there's two additional funds that were created. One was for tenant-based, for DHS referrals, and then the other is for the DHCD, for the pipeline of, of project-based that were becoming. So that fa- falls under DHCD, and then the tenant base falls under DHS. And so the money that's allocated to the DHS budget comes to us through an MOU. So what, what we do is partner in conversation with DHS is estimate, well, what's the number of voucher? Based on the allocation that they have, what's the number of households that they estimate that they can send us over? Because we still do eligibility determination. We do inspections, we do lease-ups, and we'll do recertification. So we do some of the same things that, uh, that we do as, as the housing authority, but it's just that the funding sits in a different bucket. So I just wanted to let you know that.
So this is interesting, because this includes both tenant-based and project-based resources?
Just tenant-based.
Just tenant-based, okay.
So the project-based side, I don't have a slide for it, but I'll tell you that it's about forty million.
Okay.
We have about three thousand units, uh, that are two thousand, a little over two thousand are online. And then we have the rest that are in the pipeline, so they're either under construction or they've been committed. Um, and so they come to the board first. So once the HCD makes their initial selection, they come to the board first, so that we have author, authorization to then submit the contracts to council. And then, once it has been approved by council, is when we can actually enter into the contract. To then, that's when, which is part of what they need as their financing package before they start construction. And then we don't actually start paying on the units until the units are online and there's eligible families in it. So because of that pipeline and the number of years from inception until actual paying out is why we've made the changes to the budget. Because we've had years and years where we have LRSP project sponsor base with a budget allocation, the budget authority, which we need to be able to enter into contracts, is up here, but our actual spending is a little bit less. But that's because of the time that it takes and the, yeah, the process. Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions for HCB? Now, a lot of the details behind this is in your board report, so a lot of those questions that you guys have, if you look down, you'll see more detail. Resident Services.
Nona's doing her slides.
Yes, Nona?
Hi, me again. Uh, so the, uh, Resident Services, they had a CPR class at the Envision Center on September eighth. They had fifteen participants that were there. By the Envision Center and, uh, UDC, University of District Columbia, Fall Course, Micro Entrepreneurship. Uh, they had a class that started on September twenty-sixth. They have, uh, we partner with Sherman Williams every year, uh, and they provide a painting course at the Envision Center. Um, NBC News had actually reached out to do a story about it, but it got canceled for an emergency that happened. Uh, and what those participants do is that they actually do, uh, painting projects across the properties. They'll contact the property management, uh, team, and they'll actually do that. Seventeen participants. Uh, Ken and Work, they had a Section Three event on September nineteenth. Uh, we had a great, uh, completion ceremony for our, uh, apprentice training program. Uh, we're still hosting our credit building and FSS workshop, that'll be, uh, that was held on October fourth. And our annual entrepreneur expo resource fair was held on October fourth. Questions?
Any questions?
So Nona, for example, the, the, uh, project with Sherman, Sherman Williams were training, um, painters. What is the possibility of, uh, our residents being able to get permanent jobs after completing training in any of those things that you mentioned?
So, uh, what happens especially with the, uh, apprentice training program? That we just had the completion, what we have them do is apply. And when we have, uh, positions open, we will, uh, interview those. So our intention is as they go through the different training programs, then we actually do interviews and we look to hire them into the agency. So those that we had, um, from last week, we're actually looking to interview them and see about bringing them on for open positions that we have.
What about partnering with, with our private sector partners to, to have them hire some of our residents?
Right, so that's part of our section three program. Uh, we're working on revamping that, uh, make it a lot more robust in reference to how we engage with our, uh, contractors. And, uh, uh, positions available for our residents, both professional and, uh, based on, um, construction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Last, last week's ceremony, uh, where I was very happy to be there, was really good to see those, uh, graduates. And Nona and I were, um, hanging around a little afterwards and they were all coming up asking for jobs. And it was exciting, it was like, here, go through the application process, here, this is where you go. Once you go through this process, absolutely want to interview these young people, were excited. And I was happy to be there, that was one of the highlights of, of being here was, uh, working with those young people and seeing how excited they were, were to graduate and want an opportunity for a job.
Was that, was that the program that Mr. Murphy, you attended?
Yeah, I was able to be there, it was really very inspiring and really moving and really cool to see these young people excited about the next steps in their lives. And, and I think Nona shared with me that at least two of them have been hired and, and there's potentially an opportunity for additional, uh, folks to get hired in other positions.
Great. Hey, Development. John?
He's on.
Okay.
He's on mute, I think he's speaking.
John, we can't hear you. You're gonna have to come off mute or I'm gonna have to do it.
You have me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, good afternoon, John Stringfield, Office of Capital Programs. Uh, wanna kind of catch up on time and go through these slides a little bit faster. But one thing I do want to highlight is, I know this says development update, but I want to highlight that the Office of Capital Programs has been and we are extremely busy. If you notice that bullet at the bottom, we have two hundred and thirty-six million dollars worth of active construction going. Over a hundred and eighty-two active projects. And that ranges from our urgent needs campaign, that ranges from facade improvements across the portfolio, uh, window improvements. Uh, we have comprehensive, uh, modernization at properties such as judiciary. And these projects range from fifty thousand dollars up to ten million dollars, uh, across the portfolio. So, uh, I know this says development, but I also want to highlight all the additional work that we have going on. Uh, the next, I'm sorry, go back real quick. And I'll briefly go over our three active development projects, which are Kennelworth Phase One, which is actually a hundred and six units, it's called Kennelworth one sixty-six. Uh, if you ever drive down Kennelworth Avenue, you will see our building and it is, uh, in the process of being completed, we say it's about sixty-five percent completed. We expect residents to start moving, being able to move in towards the end of this year in the first phase. Uh, Park Morton Phase One is about forty-five percent complete as moving forward. So if you're ever uptown, uh, and have an opportunity to drive by, uh, Park Morton, uh, there's a lot of activity there as well. Berry Farm, uh, Phase One, the Asbury, uh, seventy-seven replacement units there and we're about forty-eight percent complete. And then within our development pipeline, we have four projects that are either in, uh, one form of finalizing AE design or master planning and or, uh, an li-tech application submitted at Greenleaf Family Gardens. I'm sorry, Greenleaf Gardens Senior. Next slide, any, any questions on this slide? Okay, thanks, next slide. Uh, our urgent needs campaign, uh, right now we have sixty, we have forty-seven hundred units targeted for inspection. Our, our second attempt at re-inspecting the properties, uh, began in August and they will continue through the late fall. And one thing I want to reemphasize with this number right here, um, our numbers, we are actively going into the properties, trying to identify units that have not been reported by the residents. So if you see any difference in numbers that, uh, Nona may have, uh, spoke about in regards to work orders, uh, that's a, a, a nomenclature that we're using for the urgent needs campaign. But we are actively going in, trying to identify, um, work orders or to best make these properties better conditioned for our residents. So, um, we currently have nine properties, uh, that are, that we have active work being conducted at. And we expect the rest to begin, uh, by the end of the calendar year. And we expect this to take, uh, between six to nine months to complete. Um, and we expect to be complete, uh, later in the fall of twenty twenty, I'm sorry, later in the, uh, summer of twenty twenty-four. That concludes my update.
Any questions? Thank you, John. Human Resources.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kimberly Graham, I am the VP of Human Resources. And, um, I believe at last board meeting, we said we had, uh, a hundred positions that we were recruiting for, we're now down to ninety-six. Um, the areas that we have the largest vacancies are in, um, in, in PMO and in OPS. Um, and you can also see from this chart that that's also the place where we're having the largest amount of turnover. So we hired, um, in OPS twenty-five and we had twenty-two to leave. Um, and for PMO, we've hired thirty-two, but we've had twenty-one to leave. And so we're.
Again, Kimberly, for the benefit of the public, what is it?
Um, Office of Public Safety and Property Management Operations. And so those are our largest areas. And then the third place, it would be in the Housing Choice Voucher Program where we have, um, the biggest area of new hires and then, um, the, the number of employees that are departing. Um, we, we're doing a number of things and to encourage, um, new hires to come to the agency. We feel that we're doing great work, our orientations are pretty full. We've had as many as fifteen to start in an orientation and as small as three or four. Um, and so we're doing a number of things. We, we've, uh, started a link on LinkedIn where folks can see our jobs. Uh, we've signed up with GovJobs and so there's a lot of things that we're pushing to, to fill our vacancies. So, but that is our current number.
And we're also, for the exits, we're doing exit interviews to try to get an understanding of the attrition, to see if there's something that we can do to minimize that attrition. Uh, across the country, these, um, positions in Housing Choice Voucher and, and public housing typically have a high ton of turnover. But we do recognize there are some things the housing authority can do to, um, try to limit some of that turnover. So HR is doing exit interviews, we're talking with staff. What is it that, why would you want to work for the housing authority? What can we do better? We're doing surveys to figure out how we can retain staff so this attrition isn't so high.
Yeah, Jim Dickerson, do you have one or two, uh, reasons that stand out to you that you've so far heard?
That's a, that's a very good question that stand out to me. I'm, I'm gonna say, not really, but let me take a look again and get back to you on that.
Okay.
Well, and the, oh, this is Rachel Jo, Sub Chief Operating Officer. On the public safety side, we were hearing, um, complaints about compensation. And that is why we took the measures that we did in this new budget to increase the compensation, to make it more competitive with the thirty-nine other, um, public safety departments in this city. So that, that we think might help. Um, there was also an education requirement that we have, um, we moved in a different direction than MPD has on their education requirements. And we're hopeful that that will help too, um, fewer credits needed to come join the, um, public safety department here at CCHA than would be needed at MPD.
So I was actually.
Good night, Rachel.
Thank you, this is Commissioner Sala. I was gonna ask whether, um, you have looked at salaries, especially for entry level positions? And it looks like you've done that for the Office of Public Safety. Have you done that for the property management office as well? And is there an opportunity to right-size what we are offering, especially at entry level?
There's absolutely an o- opportunity for that. And we're in the process of finding an, an organization that can come in and do a full-on, um, compensation study. Because we are finding challenges with the one-off reviews of the various departments. Um, and so we would like a holistic view of our salaries.
Okay, and would, um, does Human Resources, which, um, committee is positioned to support this kind of work for Human Resources? Which of our board committees?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we just had this in administrative service committee. And they basically asked for more information on Human Resources and we agreed to provide them more detail. So they're aware of what's going on and can bring it to the board. So they, they, they gave us in the last meeting last Friday, I believe, some specific ask regarding HR, some of the same questions you're asking. So we can bring those forward to the board.
I have one question, Commissioner Verbridge. With all of these wonderful positions, does the Envision Center offer any training opportunity where some of the residents can leave the Envision Center and go right to work? Just asking.
Thank you.
No, I, I wouldn't.
But I do think that that's a wonderful opportunity. I mean, there are some things that are offered, like some of the things that Nona just mentioned. Um, and so with some of the areas that we are, uh, recognizing the turnover, especially in, um, public safety, it's just a different requirement for the work. Um, and, and then, and PMO is probably where we would recognize some of those things that could happen through the Envision Center.
Yeah, because people need careers, you know, as just a job temporarily, but a future.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Have we considered keeping that in mind? Um, for public safety, maybe, maybe next year, I know the budget's already done, something like a cadet program for, um, people to join the public safety. Cause I know that MPD started a cadet program, which was young people coming right out of high school. Um, I was at an event last week and a bunch of the cadets were there. Um, and it, it helps kind of create that pipeline to bring people in. Um, and so kind of along the same lines where maybe we look at some of our residents and bring them into a cadet program, coming right out of high school where they can start learning. Um, and I think MPD also has a, a program with UDC that helps them get their college credits that they need. Maybe there could be some sort of a, something that could be worked out also.
Cause we do have our security officers that can come through and, and, and move up to, um, officers. But I think kind of reclassified and use a cadet program would probably encourage more people to participate. So I mean, thank you for that recommendation.
A- as far as our, our main, two main programs, which are ATB and public housing. Um, as you know, there's no school, there's no college course, a high school course in this. But we can look to bringing in some of the industry experts and certification courses. And if the residents want to participate in their, get their certification in Housing Choice Voucher or Public Housing, that may be a, a pipeline for us to tap into as well. I wrote that down, sorry. But I'll pass it on to Keith as an opportunity area that, um, if we can do that, because the industry groups have these type of trainings all the time because they know, uh, Slams is off the street. We don't, you're not gonna get this course at, uh, at Howard. So you can come in and we can provide that and that, uh, could feed, uh, some of our open positions and address our attrition.
Yeah, thank you all for the opportunity for me to share what's happening. I really like the energy and interest in HR. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kimberly.
Good afternoon, everybody, I'm Michael Buck, the Chief Information Officer. Uh, hopefully mine's gonna be pretty brief, ours are just mainly project updates. So the first thing is our conversion status to YARDI. We had a really big push to, uh, review, uh, each department's usage of YARDI to make sure that their, uh, policies, process, procedure integrated into YARDI. So, you know, uh, we had everybody using YARDI, so everything was electronic and not paper, that sort of thing. So getting everybody into our system of record. So finance was one of the really big pushes. They are now fully in YARDI, fully using that system, which is gonna help a lot with, obviously, finance procurement, all that sort of stuff. So the next step is going to be OAS or our procurement department. We are going to, we are starting actually tomorrow to review their processes to make sure that everything that they're doing is, uh, represented in YARDI so that, you know, our procurement is fully electronic and, um, their, their processes are efficient, so.
OAS stands for what?
Off- Office of Administrative Services, that's basically our procurement department, yeah. Uh, and then, uh, the third item there is we are working on, as you've heard in some of the other, uh, presenters, we're working on procurement for other modules within YARDI. Uh, that includes the expansion of Rent Cafe as well as some other modules for, uh, uh, Nona, Nona's asking for a whole lot, right? So she can properly manage our properties, uh, to really help them do their jobs better. So we're working on procuring that. That's gonna be a contract modification that's gonna come y'all's way at some point here in the, in the future. So keep an eye out for that. Any questions about YARDI?
So, um, I know HUD has specific, um, modules and, and portals that where you have to submit information. So does YARDI feed into the HUD requirements?
Yeah, and they are actually working on some updates in the next year or two, so that that's a little bit more efficient. Um, but that would be a little bit outside of my realm in terms of like day-to-day operation of using those modules.
Right, the answer is yes. YARDI and emphasis are the two major, an MRI, uh, software providers in our industry. And they work with HUD and HUD work with them to make sure that software is fully integrated into the HIP, React or whatever system that they're bringing forward. So that's one of the reasons why, um, Hotma was pushed back to allow the software providers to make sure the software that the housing authorities use fully integrates and the housing authorities can use them to implement those new, um, requirements.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is we have our Office three sixty-five conversion. This is converting a lot of our old systems into Office three sixty-five, uh, which is a lot of your productivity tools, like, you know, your desktop version of Office Outlook or stuff like that. Uh, basically moving to the cloud, right? So we are about sixty percent complete with that overall project. Uh, we have just, uh, migrated all of our staff over to Microsoft Teams, which is the replacement for WebEx. Over the next year, we will complete the migration for the rest of staff, which will eventually include you all, we're hoping. Uh, so that everybody is just on Teams instead of having two separate systems. The next steps are updating our Intranet and then some security upgrades. You know, we're constantly looking to upgrade the security of all of our information technology systems. We have telephony, uh, that is something, so that is all of our phones. How do we call people, uh, text message, all that sort of stuff? Over COVID, that's something that kind of ballooned as we responded to COVID. We needed to get cell phones out to people, we needed to get, uh, WebEx out to people, all different ways for people to be able to communicate remotely. We're now going back and we're cleaning a lot of that up. And we're having a succinct policy around that so that we can say, this person, this position gets a cell phone, but they don't get a VoIP phone. Um, and we're also going through, and we've been over the last year or so, cleaning up our old school landlines so that, you know, we no longer nowadays, uh, use what you're used to, you know, having a phone in your kitchen sort of thing, where now everything goes over the internet, right? So, uh, that's what we're working on, cleaning up all those old line lines. It's gonna save, or has already saved us a lot of money as we move toward, towards VoIP or voice over, uh, internet, basically. Uh, UKG and employee transitions. Pull HR in on this a little bit. Um, we have been struggling with the, the vendor, UKG. They have been pushing that transition out several times on us. You can see here it's November, it's actually no longer November as of last week.
Yes.
Yeah. It's now January. So this, this transition is moving from our old, uh, HR system of records, which is Cronos, to the new. So this, this transition is moving from our old HR system of records, which is Cronos, to the new one, which is UKG. It's, it's the same company, same system, we're just moving to the more, their more modern version. But that is in process. We're hoping, we're trying to keep them to that January deadline, since they've been moving on a lot. But this will help us out a lot with the little next bullet there, which is a lot of our onboarding and offboarding processes, which right now are, you know, pretty manual. This will help both IT and HR have these processes be electronic, automated in many ways. So it will help make things more efficient and it will help with security a lot as, you know, people's accounts get automatically turned off or turned on, that sort of thing.
So, so this system, Cronos or now UKG, this is what employees use for, say, timekeeping and things like that?
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, so yeah, that ties into the time clocks, all that sort of stuff. And then my last bullet is we are working on another website redesign. We were not super happy with the current redesign. So we really want to make it more customer-friendly, much cleaner, easier to use, have more information available to our customers and residents. So that's currently in the works.
Are we doing that in-house or do we have an outside?
We're doing it in-house this time, because we weren't super thrilled with what the outside agency did for us. And we have the skill set in-house to do that, so.
And what, as far as the website, we, the idea was to make sure it's informative, but also address who we are as an agency. So you'll be more, it'll be more reflecting of the residents, be more reflective of the staff. So when everyone goes to the website, they see the DC represented. And it's not just numbers and code information. We wanted to represent the housing authority and the people that work there. And it'd be easy for use from a customer service standpoint, self-service capabilities and just the overall layout. So the things that we've been talking about and we've been looking at is to streamline that, to make it more user-friendly and make it so that we're also considering our staff when we're looking at the website. When doing designs, a lot of housing authorities are now understanding that the most important asset we have are our staff. And what we've been hearing across the country is, yeah, you're showing residents now, you're showing the board, but what about us? So we want that staff to be represented on the website as well.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
With all this information technology, I notice for the staff, how does it affect the resident councils? Will they also have, get rid of their landlines when they have problems with their system? Just asking, so you can think about that in the near future. Because these are the people we need to communicate with.
So that's a very good question, and we're already working on that. We have been talking to the resident councils to kind of pull them into the fold, in a sense. So one of the first things was they were, you know, purchasing their own computers, own internet, you know, all that sort of stuff. And we're starting to tell them, come through us to order that equipment so that we can support it for you. Because what would happen previously is they would set up internet. They would get a computer and then there was nobody there to support it, right? Because we weren't involved at all. So we're asking them to come through us so that we can, you know, make sure that their internet is up and running, that their computers are working, all that sort of stuff. And we will support them.
You will fix it.
We will fix it if it breaks, exactly.
So even if they have an older model, they still come to you? I mean, are they aware?
Yeah, so we've, we've just started this conversation with them. So like, we've not made any sort of big announcement about it or anything. But yes, so if it's an older model, what we would say is, you know, come to us for support, but we're probably going to replace it, right? And get you a new one, because it'll fit into our inventory, record-keeping and refresh process, right? So if it's more than four years old, we need to refresh it because it's out of date, so.
And the question I can hear them asking me already is, will that come out of their budget or will that be supported by DC Housing?
So the initial response is that that would come out of our budget, uh, yeah. My little hemming and hawing is from the finance aspect, I don't know how they would do chargebacks, if we would want to do that at some point, but right now, yeah, it would just come out of our budget. It's not, it's not that huge of a problem for us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, Kimberly, are you there?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. Can't hear you, Kimberly.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, good afternoon. I am Kimberly Allen, I'm the Vice President.
It's very low, Kimberly, it's very low. Could you speak up or turn it on?
How about now? Is that any better?
Still faint.
Pardon me, give me one moment. Do you want to skip ahead a little? Is it any better now?
Yes, it's better.
Okay.
Speak up.
Can you hear me now? I'm speaking.
Yes, but Ken, you're going to have to get your outside voice, please project.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to, we've submitted the monthly report for the Office of Administrative Services, which is the agency's contracting and procurement department, as well as labor compliance. Outside of the, as part of the monthly report, I wanted to recap that the agency had an onsite HUD review in July that was an oversight of our labor compliance or the work effort of our labor and compliance staff. Currently, the agency has two contract compliance specialists who are responsible for the labor enforcement activities for all of DCHA's Davis Bacon-covered projects. And so the wrap-up at the top kind of gives an overview of what those responsibilities are from the, their review of the project scope and awarding a, or determining a wage determination for the project, which basically sets up the minimum labor requirements, wages for the projects for any positions that are going to be working on the projects, all the way through semi-annual reporting to HUD, which is a recap of any wage determinations that the agency has assigned on a six-month basis. And so we do those reports in May and then in September. I'm sorry, April and then Sep, April and then October of each year. So as a result of HUD's review, we received our, our report, which there were four findings. They reviewed a total of eight projects that were roughly around $32 million worth of work. And out of the projects that they looked at, there were four findings that were related to basic labor enforcement requirements. And so the first of which were certified payrolls. There was a project, there were projects that were looked at where they may have been missing certified payroll. The next thing that they found was there was a underpayment for a employee that worked on the project. They weren't paid the proper rate, weight, rate of pay for the position. And when that happens, the agency is responsible for contacting the contractor, following up to make sure that restitution payments are collected to make sure that we are paying people the correct wages. The third finding was related to overtime, same sort of thing. There was an employee that worked on a project that was due overtime pay, that was paid regular rate of pay. Again, it's the agency's responsibility to follow up with the prime contractor in those instances to follow up and make sure that we're getting the restitution payment to pay the employee. Finding was regards to employee interviews. For every project that is federally funded and it falls under Davis Bacon, we, our staff, those two labor compliance specialists are responsible for visiting those projects while the work is going on. And the purpose of that is to do employee interviews to make sure that our contractors and subcontractors are taking care of their employees, that folks are getting paid what the poster says they should be paid, that should be mirroring the wage determination, that the work site is safe in conditions of that nature. All of those sorts of things. There was a finding that there was a, one of the projects, there wasn't an interview, employee interview on file. As a result of those four findings, had to put together, of course, DCHA response. And so to address all four of the findings, the first thing that we did was labor compliance refresher training, meaning that the labor compliance specialist reviewed the applicable code of labor or HUD regulation as it related to the finding. They had to review that actual subject matter and refresh for that level of training. The other thing is the labor compliance staff followed up with the contractors and the subcontractors for any matters of restitution, whether it was an overtime payment or folks being paid at the right rate. They had to follow up, send that documentation and follow up with the contractors for those payments. The third thing that was included in our HUD response was that we are currently staffing for our procurement manager position. That is the supervisory level that is responsible for the direct oversight and management of the labor compliance staff, as well as our contracting and procurement staff. So as that position is filled, we certainly expect to have a secondary level of oversight that would be able to work with the labor compliance specialists to make sure that moving forward, these types of findings aren't present. And then the last effort is software implementation. One of the things that we have targeted for FY24 is to do or is to competitively solicit to award a contract for labor compliance software. This particular software, softwares of this nature have become an industry standard to help labor compliance folks with project oversight. The software, you're able to load all of your information in there and it's just an automated tool. It helps you stay on top of the monitoring your projects to make sure that these types of enforcement findings aren't found. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Kimberly.
You're welcome.
In short, we had another HUD review and there were some things that we, that were found. And we addressed them, we addressed them through training. We put an action plan together to prevent this going forward, which included some software, some technology, to make sure that we're tracking this accurately and getting those wage compliance requirements completed. And it's Sarah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Director. So let me first start by answering a question that Chairman Skinner had asked about YARDI and its relevance in compliance with HUD. So the first thing is, the YARDI conversion is part of the HUD report of 2022 as recommendation F6. And it does help finance and the agency with compliance with HUD. And that is through having the VMS submitted directly from YARDI. And VMS is the voucher management system. So basically, our voucher data for HCV would be submitted directly from YARDI, utilizing the data that's real-time in there on a monthly basis. Right now, we're putting that report on a manual, in a manual, a very manual and lengthy, lengthy process. The other compliance from a finance standpoint is the FDS, and that's the Finance Data Schedule or Financial Data Schedule. And that's another manual process that we are doing right now. And it's an annual submission for the agency's financials to HUD. And that would be coming out of YARDI by the end of FY24. So I hope that answers your questions on that, on that part, Chairman Skinner.
Thank you.
Sure. Now, let me talk about the financials. We, as you're aware, we went to a quarterly report due to the technology challenges that we, we addressed by moving into YARDI, which was the case by having two systems and pulling the data from two systems. Another painful process that we were going through, and hopefully those days are over. So in our Q3 report, as you can see, the agency's financials are tracking really, really well compared to the budget. I'm not going to go into a lot of details, because we went over the financials earlier this month with the committee, but I'll just do the main highlights. The total revenue right now is 7% higher than budget, or $31 million, and our expense is 5% over, or $19 million. And that's translating right now into a surplus of $13.7 million. But that's, that's a very important note that I would like to make here. In prior years that I've been with the agency, I've seen the same trend by Q3. And the reason is we have many vendors who submit their final invoices by Q4, end of Q4. And usually, a lot of that surplus is absorbed at that point. Then we do also have some year-end closing general entries, including the allowance for bad debts or uncollectible rents. That happens only once a year, and that also happens at the end of the year. So although we're showing a very healthy surplus right now, I believe that we're going to be ending up closer to the budgeted net position and that surplus will be absorbed in full by our next report, Q4 report. Currently, go ahead.
This is Rachel Joseph, Chief Operating Officer. I just want to also add that anything that is left in a surplus is limited, but in use because of it, it's tied to the federal budget. So if it's half administrative, administrative fees, we need to use it for HCVP. If it's property management fees, we need to use that for public housing. So there are, even if there is extra money, there will be limitations on how that will be able to be used moving forward.
Right. And so we're, we're going to start our year-end closing process in 10 days from now. That's October 20th is when we start, and that's going to take about a month to wrap up. And we should be able to report Q4 financials and basically the entire year to the committee and to the board by then. So before I move on to the next slide, any questions on the financials? All right. Okay, so the main highlight is what IT had mentioned. Again, this is a recommendation in the HUD report, the F6 for finance recommendations. We promised HUD and we promised the board that we will deliver on October 1st, 2023, and we did. We had a very tight schedule and very tight timeline, identified some problems and issues through the process. We pushed some of them until after go-live. And those are minor setup or configuration issues that we are dealing with right now. I believe it's going to take between 30 to 60 days to fully stabilize the system. But as of today, no other system is being used from the finance department. So we should expect, yeah, we should expect.
Congratulations, that's right. That was a huge, that was a heavy lift, John, don't just glass over that, that we're no longer using two systems for financials. We can get real-time financial reports and we eliminate that manual process that they were utilizing. We can just pull them directly out of our main software system. That's great.
You, it, it was a team effort. Everybody, every department actually helped out. And within finance, a lot of people carried the heavy lift here. So, you know, kudos to the entire agency and, you know, we managed to get this done, and I couldn't be happier. So going forward, we will be able to produce reports on a monthly basis and we will have those reports presented to the committee and to the board. Again, I expect 30 to 60 days to stabilize the system, but we are there. My next point here is related to the audits. I believe most of the board members are aware that our FY21 audit is severely delayed. And it really is. So let me address what happened there. So for the audit, the audit is usually supposed to be submitted to HUD nine months after the end of the fiscal year, which means that F Y twenty one should have been submitted to HUD, should have been finalized and submitted to HUD in June of twenty twenty two. And it's now a year and four months late. We are working to get it done by the end of this month. So this is, this is, I think, a very hard commitment on our part. But again, let me address the reasons why we're we're here. During the time that we were supposed to be working on the report, we actually had several reviews and audits in twenty twenty two, including the HUD review. And that put a strain on the O F M of very few resources. And again, I go back to the HUD report, the recommendation F seven addresses that O F M had a very high vacancy rate at the time. And so we, you know, during that time, I think the term that people use is that great resignation, a lot of people had left. So at the time, we had thirty percent vacancy rate in finance. And we had fifty percent vacancy in supervisory positions again in finance. And we had four different audits or reviews that we were trying to tackle. So that set us back really bad. And then, in addition to straining the few resources that we already had, we had the technology challenges which we just mentioned. And by the time we overcome most of those challenges and were able to produce the report, we had to wait, our auditors actually had to wait for the response from HUD and the results from those other audits, which didn't happen until November of last year. And then there were some scheduling issues between us and the auditors. Obviously, they're not going to sit there and wait for us to finish. And then they will put their staff to it. They have reassigned their staff to other engagements. So with all of that happening, I think it was the perfect storm. A lot of things that could go wrong went wrong. And we're here today. But the report is almost finished. And we're going to have the final report as well as the F D S submission by the end of this month. Now, the plan to catch up is as as such. We're we're doing F Y twenty two audit right now. And we have a very tight schedule and aggressive schedule to finalize it by January twenty twenty four. And then F Y twenty three audit will start immediately afterwards. And we believe, as well as our auditors, that we will be able to finalize F Y twenty three audit on that HUD deadline, which is end of June twenty twenty four. So we should be able to catch up in the next four or five months.
Any questions about this?
How optimistic is this?
I mean, we're we're fully staffed and we have been preparing. So it's not like we have been waiting for the auditors to send us their requests. We used the, I instructed the staff to use the P B C list items from prior years and pull the data that is not specific to one year and have it ready. There will be some requests that are more specific to the years that they are auditing. But, you know, we hope that we can get through those weekly.
Okay, we're being optimistic and we're being aggressive. We met with them and they understand urgency because the agency is out of compliance now. We're talking about the twenty one audit that haven't been submitted. And we we were so far behind and HUD brought this out in one of our meetings when we talked about the review. They specifically called out that we were delinquent and that we need to get this resolved. So, John, and we we met with the auditors and we're really pushing them. So we think we can get to twenty one and twenty two on time. Twenty three, we'll see. But twenty one and twenty two, we should be able to get those in because they build on each other. Also want to mention, and John, make sure you clarify that with me, they build on each other. You can't submit one without the other because the financials have to roll together.
Can I, we're going to get twenty three on time.
Gotcha.
It's twenty one that's already not on time and twenty two that's already not on time. And we are working to catch up so that we will, twenty three will be on time.
Sounds good.
In my performance plan.
Now, the last bullet point I have here is related to the F Y twenty five local budget. We're starting the process. Usually, we finalize our package and submit by November, first half of November. But we're working on that right now. And again, it's a team effort. A lot of people from H C V, O C P, and even senior leadership are helping us with with putting that together to submit it to the district. So that is on track and we don't expect it to be delayed.
Thank you for your effort.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner still has a question.
Yeah, quick question. Does the board get to support the budget formulation process? Is that something that we review and sign off on before you submit it?
Historically, that has not been a part of the process, especially because we really get, we get a mark that has been flat for the last few years and we just sort of go with it. But if that's something that the board would like to be a part of the process, you know, we can certainly have that conversation. We are planning on talking to Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Clay about just some things that we have been float, that have been floating around with you all and whether there it it's even worth our time to make those asks or whether it's just the the financial situation in the city isn't going to allow for them.
I think if we talk about it at the subcommittee level, that's like more than sufficient, given that there's like not a lot of opportunities here. But it would be nice to start the practice of sending it to a subcommittee at least so that some portion of the board has an opportunity to.
I mean, assuming that we, the the thing is, and maybe Commissioner Clay can add some insight to this, we usually have our mark by now and we haven't gotten it.
Got marks, yeah.
So we, I don't know how much that then delays when our, when everything is going to be due. We're going to have a really quick turnaround if if our, the due date is when it historically has been. So we will, absolutely, we will bring it to the committee. The opportunity for feedback may need to come after we submit it to the city. And then, you know, given that Director Reed is the mayor's budget director and is the head of the budget committee for you all, then she can help us navigate whether there, if there need to be any changes.
Sounds good. I wouldn't add anything, I think, Rachel. So so I I will say just, and we don't actually even control when the when the marks come out. We haven't received mark information yet. I think the city's budget kickoff is next week. So we don't know when the budget will be due and whether or not they'll even be, you know, what that timeline looks like. But but I will say, one other thing I will also add is that usually, as Rachel kind of stated, the mark has been flat. So a lot of times, the initial budget submission is pretty much the same every year because those are the programs that are currently funded by the district. Perhaps there could be an opportunity for conversation about the enhancement requests that are that are made. And and I think that could be an area for for conversation, so.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you.
Good. You save the best for last, but we're behind schedule, so I'm going to ask you to to talk fast.
Well, first, first of all, thank you, everyone that approved the O P S budget enhancement. We think that's going to go a long way toward our recruitment and our retention initiatives. So we really appreciate that. For the month of September, the the authority experienced fourteen violent crimes within seventy five foot radius of our properties. And that was three point four four percent of all violent crimes occurring in the city with property crimes, forty three property crimes within our seventy five foot radius. And that's a one point nine six percent of all property crimes occurring in the city for a total of fifty seven crimes on on within seventy five foot radius of our properties. And that equals out to only two point nine one nine percent of all crimes occurring in the city. Our enforcement efforts were, we think, helped lead to those type of reductions. We made eight arrests throughout the city. Most of those were in the southeast and southwest quadrants of our properties. Had ten barring notices here, but actually four came in after the report was prepared. It was fourteen barring notices and those were issued throughout the city. We recovered one stolen auto from our Lejoy property. And we received a firearm, we recovered a firearm with an extended magazine loaded with numerous rounds of ammunition from our Lincoln Heights community. That, along with numerous bags of individually wrapped bags of marijuana, we located in a vacant unit when we're doing our vacant unit checks. And actually, that came from a tip from one of the citizens out there. So we really appreciate when citizens utilize our tip lines, but just won't call me, call me directly and let me know there were some issues at a certain property where we we went to that property that night and we were able to recover that contraband, so it was great. Over at our ten properties that are under the O E G compliance agreement, plus the Potomac Gardens and Hopkins communities, which we added to our automated workforce deployment program, seven hundred and sixty four patrols during the month of September. And of course, enforcement initiatives is not all we do. We also do a lot of community outreach. We did community, nine community outreach programs throughout our properties through the month of September. And that's pretty much it.
And I ask you a question about community outreach. In terms of establishing relationships with residents, key relationships between officers and the and the residents, is that part of this community outreach or is it just meetings? How does that work?
No, some of his meetings, but when his meetings, Lab is is planning sessions for events that we're going to put on with the community. We work very closely with the resident councils and the and the service providers out in the communities to put on events that are beneficial to whatever the needs are for our communities, community residents. So a lot of that is planning sessions and outreach initiatives with community members.
I just think the presence and the relationships with key people is very important with the officers. Community policing is very, very effective if it's done right.
I I agree with you totally. Our whole policing philosophy is based on community policing and trying and putting the same officers out in the communities, working with them on a daily basis. And part of it is identifying what their needs are and working with other agencies in order to help fulfill those particular needs.
Thank you for your service, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
These look like good numbers.
They're low compared to. They're actually low. And I want to thank the Commissioners for allowing us to go through this. The source, the staff, new to them, a lot of them having to present. So really appreciate them stepping up and. I do want to just share one last thing as we get ready for the transition for Mr. Pettigrew to come in. We are working with him actively to provide him information to make this as seamless as possible. We're gathering data and we're submitting it over to him as he's requesting information for his transition. So that is ongoing, just so to let you guys know that that is happening. And we're hoping for, we will have a seamless transition on this first day. And he'll have, he'll be armed with a, oh, bad choice of words. He will have information on where we are currently, some of the things that we're working on, how prior priority items and such when he arrives.
Thank you, Dorian.
And thank you, Director, Interim Director Jenkins, for the great work that you've done on the short time that you've been here. You've gotten really good feedback from the staff internally as well as outside parties that you've interacted with. So again, we thank you for stepping up. I mean, I know it's a very challenging situation, but we appreciate your efforts and all the great work you've done.
And I know we're behind, so we have to.
We're going to move on to resident testimony, which is next. And we're going to start with our residents. And each person will have three minutes of testimony. And you can talk about whatever issues are on your mind, including the the resolutions that are on the agenda for today. So we're going to start with, I think it's Kiana Mallory.
Kiana Mallory, is she there? Okay, we'll move on to this, Ms. Shante Ha, this is Ha there.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How y'all doing today?
Good.
Deorah Meany, chapter fifteen, verse eleven, for there will never cease to be poor in the land. Therefore, I command you, you shall open your, open wide your hand to your brother, to the needy and to the poor in the land. And as I already said, good afternoon, I'm Miss Ha, the president of the Council at Park Morton. I'm here to testify about my business, High Alert Emergency Preparedness, or H A E R Prep, is a HUD Section Three registered business. My small, black owned, woman owned, disabled owned business is in need of contracts, funding or investments in order for me to be successful, in order for me to successfully participate in the self sufficiency program. I'm coming to this board yet again to ask the District of Columbia Housing Authority to partner with my small business. I have asked this under the leadership of Mr. Neil Albert, Ms. Dion Bosse Reader. And now I'm asking, under the leadership of Mr. Raymond Skinner, this has has been also asked under the former directors, Tyrone Garrett, who signed my proposal but did not execute it upon exiting his position, and the former executive director Brenda Dondu, who did not honor the former E D's actions. And now I'm asking, under the leadership of Mr. Keith Pettigrew, the new executive director of D C H A. And how are residents, how are residents, whether they reside on the public housing or housing choice vouchers, supposed to become fully self sufficient to build a sustainable lifestyle without the assistance of consumers, investors or funding to market their or our businesses? D C H A needs to start contracting with resident businesses first before allowing outside contractors to bid on anything. It is the time for residents to own their fair share of these contracts, for these contracts, their communities and their or our lives. It is time to allow us to have our thirty percent of the pie. It's not like we didn't work for it with all of the hoops that we have to jump through just trying to get D C H A to do their jobs that they get paid to do. And in closing, I leave you with Proverbs, chapter three, verse twenty seven. Do not withhold good from those to whom it is due when it is in your power to do it. I am Miss Ha, President of the Council at Park Morton. I I bid you all au revoir et adieu.
Thank you, Ms. Ha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Paulette Matthews. Paulette Matthews. Do you need to unmute, you can hit star six. Okay, I'll continue, Ms. No, Ms. Beverly Barrow. Beverly Barrow.
This is Matthews.
Okay, Ms. Matthews, you can proceed.
Hi, Ms. Matthews.
Hello, first I want to talk about, this wasn't on the plan, but since the chief spoke and he was giving such rave reviews. I live in Lejoy Park, Keller Miller. And there has been several gunshots within the property itself. I'm puzzled by, I think these things that they have actually on the homes are for the police to be able to know when gunfire is in a certain location to know where to come to. I don't, I don't think none of them work. That's, that's my point right there. So I'm going to leave that one alone and let y'all marinate with that. My issue is basically maintenance and how long it takes for work to be done. When you get a control number, talk to the resident manager and all of that, and nothing seems to be done. So am I correct in hearing earlier that they said something about thirty or ninety days for a turnover? I don't know, but it really makes no sense to me because when you have a problem and you get a control number, here where I am right now, it's always they have to order a part. It takes a while for the part to get to the location and then for them to do the work. I understand when they say they have emergencies, but we must have emergencies every day here where I live at because. because I have some work orders that have been put in and nothing has been done yet. I also have talking with Mr. Denning in reference to several different things. My waterfall that's along the side of my outside of the house when it rains, how it has started peeling off the paint inside. Um, where there's electric, my outlet is right there, so that's a problem. I'm sorry, my light switch, which there's a problem with that. I'm still waiting for someone to fix it. They came, they did some type of work on it, but it was not efficient enough. It didn't stop the problem. I'm still having the problem. And I just don't understand how I can't seem to get the work done. And I have control numbers for. So that's one of my main problems there is just trying to get the work done in my unit after having a control number. And I'm not gonna discuss my fence right now because I'm waiting for some feedback. Um, and I'll see how much longer that's gonna take. So it's becoming from the um, Executive Director, uh, so it said in the email. And that's pretty much all I have to say today. Oh, no, let's get back to the contractors. We have plenty of contractors that came through um, within this property and probably all over. The problem I have is you have the contractors, they give y'all the information to the unit on top of the information that we have already given as residents for the problems in which we see in our unit. And why is that also taking a long time to be done? Because we have several contractors coming through, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And then with all of that, nothing has been done to resolve the issue. So what is that process and what is that turnaround like or how is that supposed to happen? And I think that we should know how this works. It's still sitting here allowing these people to come in, check all through our houses, take notes, take pictures, and then still sit and wait six, seven months or a year later.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. We'll follow up with the staff and see if we can expedite that.
All right, and thank you, because last month I said that and nobody called me yet. In reference to anything I said, it's almost like I don't ask questions. It's like I give statements and that's it. But thank you.
Um, Ms. Beverly Barrow. Ms. Barrow. Uh, for those residents who have comments on resolution and general comments, uh, former Commissioner Ken Council. Mr. Council, are you there?
I am. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm gonna change, I'm gonna change what I had to say. I just something listening to what you all just said and the finance that people. But back in the day when I was a commissioner, there was a decision about having the contract compliance be moved. And the reason why was because procurement department had a conflict. The issues were raised by the contract compliance piece. The staff did not address it in a timely manner and never did. HUD actually recommended that the contract compliance move to the Office of Audit and Compliance. For inst- for instance, the findings that Ms. Allen just referred to, they're not new issues. And they were specific contracts and targeted contracts in the budget of twenty twenty-two. That HUD literally asked for information that they still do not have. And I just heard you all talk about twenty-one and twenty-two. It's still information that they have not gotten yet to this day. This is the reason why that HUD made recommendations. Um, factual, last Monday, the, the office, I guess you wanna call it the, the Teller Street Warehouse, they emptied out and gave everybody on different properties what they needed. And the surplus that Rachel keeps talking about, the residents have not received anything. I'll give you one factual, two, five, three, thirty-seven place. The house is sick and people are still living in it. Please do something about it. Two, five, three, thirty-seven place. The house is sick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Ms. Patricia Malloy.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi, Ms. Malloy.
Patricia Malloy, I am the former Resident Council President for Lincoln Heights. Today I'm speaking on Lincoln Heights in regards to Resolution twenty-three forty-eight, which is to authorize submission of a phased application to HUD for demolition or disposition of Lincoln Heights and Richardson. My question is, why are you all submitting another demo disposition? When I was the President of the Resident Council in twenty fifteen, an application was submitted to demo disposition Lincoln Heights, Richardson dwellings, Lincoln Heights in particular, and phases. You took down the thirty-three units that was vacant for nine years. Now there's nineteen units that you want to take down, but there are still one or two families living in those nineteen units. Why is the agency submitting another demo disposition? I'm asking you to table it. I did a survey of Lincoln Heights. The residents knew nothing about D C H A submitting an application or the uh, housing submitting to the board, Starboard, an application to sign off, to demo the property. Why you are treating them like that? I'm asking you to table that. I'm asking you to do a more thorough communication. D C H A, to me, you should be responsible. Resident Services should put up flyers, letting the residents know what's going on. You all know I'm not on the property. Really, you don't, really, I don't think you all really want me to represent the residents because Director Skinner, Commissioner Skinner. Each month I've been asking the same questions. When is Lincoln Heights going to get a manager? I also heard when you all were talking about the I T. Lincoln Heights do have the headphones with the laptops. That doesn't serve a purpose because the bodies that supposedly be in the runoff office is not answering the phones. The residents are calling me and I've given them a number to call to make their complaints. I, I call Lincoln Heights three or four times a day. The first thing to come on H M A one or H M A two is not available to take your call. I leave messages. When are you available? The contractors, who is monitoring the contractors that's working in the residence units? I told the residents to start taking pictures. When they come to these residence units, they're being there for a little while, then they leave. The resident walk up by the office, they sitting there drinking beer and eating pizza. Who is responsible to monitor the contractor? Enter Director Jenkins, I'm being honest. The residents of Lincoln Heights have no voice, because I know you all not listening to me. But I'm gonna get some help for them because it's unfair, their, their human rights are being invaded. D C H A is doing what they want to do. We know the property has to come down, but out of all respect, at least tell them so they won't say, we don't know what's happening. And that's the problem.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Malloy. So when the staff comes up to talk about Lincoln Heights, we'll hopefully we can answer those questions.
Thank you. Um, next is Ms. Joyce Simmons. Ms. Joyce Simmons.
Good afternoon. I'm Joyce Simmons, Richard Drell, dwellings, um, President, Resident Counsel. Okay, I've, I haven't been able to talk about this for years, but I've decided to talk about this this time. For past seventeen years, we have lived with this threat of housing demolition and now find that the very people who trusted, we trusted to help us have actually not truthfully at both coming in their actions. We are people, no matter our economies status, who deserve better. Did we know that D C H A was asking to demolish the entire Lincoln Heights property? Did we know the exact units for demolishing for Richardson dwelling? Did we know that the development of mixed community did not necessarily, certainly involve the families who have lived in these properties for generations? The answer is no. And now we have been faced with threats, including property development in units not mentioned before. Few property repairs, few choices of new residents in view of the ongoing ever-changing plans for the redevelopment of two public housing properties. We have been misled and misused. We have been surveyed and it has been reported by several outside companies that we were aware of and approved intended changes. We have little to no idea of the plans we have been made aware of for redevelopment. We have made countless, you have well, made countless presentations about redevelopment since nine to two thousand and six. My housing, that did not include the entire truth of redevelopment plan as evidence about the draft I hold of absolute twenty-three forty-eight. Again, we have been fortunate to have many nonprofit partners who helped us and encouraged us and continue our growth. It's disheartening to know that our housing provider is planning to increase homelessness and discourage our environment in a large part of our lives. I have been a resident Richardson dwelling for twenty years and the Resident Council President for nine. I feel abandoned and misleading. Leave it. I need, I have little positive information to give my residents. This lack of care makes a harmful and discouraging living environment, more than good will follow. That's all I'm gonna say right now.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Simmons. Again, uh, when the staff comes up to talk about um, Richardson, uh, we'll try to see if this, your questions can be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Ms. Patricia Bishop.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi, Ms. Bishop.
As President of Greenleaf, I'm really disheartened for these same things as a tenant. Also, keep repeating itself. Y'all do a great job with trying to correct y'all errors with HUD. How about the loyalty to the tenants that HUD has told y'all in that audit report to stop disrespecting and harming the tenants of D C Public Housing? With demolition disposals, proper things being done while people are living in public housing? It's not happening. When are y'all gonna take accountability to pick who we are as the tenants of Washington, D.C.? Public housing first and stop those shenanigans of all these other things to come first before you place these tenants first? How about a report of how many tenants have died behind the health that y'all have allowed them to live in for years? Even before Tyrone Garrett, some of these conditions are still going on in public housing. My eyes are wide open to it. How about y'all eyes doing and seeing the same thing that I see? And hold each and every one of y'all and the rest of the staff of D C Housing accountable. I would appreciate that. And before you start these resolutions and demolition disposals, please ask the tenants what they need right away. There's still a pandemic going on. How many have purifiers in that budget, that housing percentage for better health for these tenants? Before you start digging in walls, causing more lead, mold, asbestos, problems with their health? Boy, if I can sit in y'all seats, these tenants will get what they need one way or the other. Thank you for listening. Get in good trouble and do what's best for the tenants.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Thank you. Next is Daniel DePulago.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Daniel DePulago. I want to testify on the resolution to submit the demo dispo application for Lincoln Heights and Richardson dwellings. Um, we have actually been recently there, uh, talking with residents about the A C O P changes and how that affects them. When we speak to residents, what we hear is the conditions issues that exist there, the vacancies issues that exist there. They know very little about any plans for their properties to be demolished. For years now, people have been told that a redevelopment is coming. But aside from that, there is very little in the way of details. And now here we go again with a resolution to submit a demo, uh, dispo application, which for me is the death knell to a public housing property. We've seen it at Kennelworth, we've seen it at Berry Farm, we've seen it at Park Morton. All these resolutions, if approved, and then if the applications are approved by HUD, all they accomplish in the first ten years is a displacement of residents around the city. Residents do not benefit, not one bit, from these um, applications being approved. They're relocated to another subpar public housing um, property or they may get a, a voucher, which for the most part does not equate to improve living conditions. So I really would urge this body to reconsider approving another resolution that'll put another project out in the air without any real plans on getting it completed, much less any plans that will improve the living conditions for public housing residents. We were seeing what's happening at Kennelworth, where tenants were promised one thing. They thought they won something and now that is being changed. So why would you all start on another project that will take another twenty years to get finished when you forgot a bunch of other projects that have not been finished? So much like the residents who have testified uh, before me, I've said, this needs to be tabled and rethought and something better needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. William Jordan. Mr. Jordan.
Okay, I'll move from here. Okay. Uh, good afternoon.
Hi, Mr. Jordan.
How are you doing? Uh, my name is William Jordan. I'm part of the Park Morton Equity Team. Um, I have a lot of issues, but I'm gonna focus on the remnants of Resolution twenty-two nineteen, but more specifically, the three hundred thousand four-to-one savings matching program. So, and we had a Park Morton Advisory Committee meeting and I think it was September twenty-sixth. We were told that the money for that opportunity for residents to save uh, would be going away at the end of the fiscal year. And that maybe five residents were able to maybe take advantage of the program. But my guess is unlikely that any did and the three hundred thousand would be lost. That money was made available by the council in twenty twenty-two in August or July. The program, program was gonna be a partnership between Disby, Denpad, and the Housing Authority. After a year, the housing of the partners are, were scrambling in August and September to try to get residents to sign up. And of course, residents were reluctant because the program wasn't rolled out properly. Um, so residents probably could have saved, each household, forty residents were targeted. They were to get a year to save fifteen hundred dollars. They were to get a year to save fifteen hundred dollars, which would have been matched by six thousand dollars, which would have meant a household would have had an opportunity to save or have in savings seventy-five hundred dollars. So anyway, the program failed, and I really need this board. I think it failed because the board did not make it clear they wanted it to succeed. So it did not succeed. The partners don't respond unless this board makes it clear that this is important, that these opportunities for residents succeed. So I'm kind of at my wit's end. Um, I'm gonna find out some more about the program, where the status. I would like to seek non-public funds to reestablish this opportunity for residents, but I'm afraid to even try because what I've seen is partners slow-walk these kind of opportunities, and it's really disheartening. So, you know, I really don't know what to do. I'm highly frustrated. Um, I thought this was one thing we could all work on together, and that there would be at least forty families that are more much better off than they were a year or so ago, but it didn't happen, and it was all due to bureaucracy and I think sabotage and some other things. I, I can't figure it out, so. So I'm in my testimony there, but.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Or angry, disappointed, or what it is, but this board needs to step up because the system doesn't work if residents want to do better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Chris Williams. Mr. Williams?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We can hear you.
The DCHA Board adopted rules that required responses to all questions posed during the public comment portion of board meetings. I did not receive responses to my questions in February and April of two thousand and twenty-two. The plans for Greenleaf have significantly deviated from the request for qualifications and proposals. You are in possession of a letter from the Greenleaf Resident Leadership opposing the FY twenty-four Moving to Work Plan. First, the RFQ and RFP, along with the DC Comprehensive Plan, emphasize build-first for Greenleaf. There is still no build-first site. There are numerous, well-documented and firsthand accounts that there were irregularities in the scoring of the final proposals. Second, the RFQ did not have any plans for preservation of Greenleaf Senior. Now, there is some speculation of historic preservation. All of Greenleaf dates to the same construction period, so historic preservation is warranted in its entirety if this is the argument. In addition, the RFQ was misleading. The language reads, "All of the properties were built in nineteen fifty-nine, are physically obsolete, and have high maintenance costs." Greenleaf Senior cannot be deemed physically obsolete if it, if it is being renovated and preserved. Greenleaf buildings remain structurally sound. We all know that the Rental Assistance Demonstration, or RAD, is associated with displacement. The renovation is expected to displace all residents, which would have been entirely avoidable if DCHA had had, uh, not had procurement irregularities and had selected a development team with site control for a build-first site. In April two thousand and nineteen, Ward Six Council member Charles Allen said in the city paper that he is glad to see this process moving forward, but that he expects not one current Greenleaf resident to be displaced while waiting on a new home. Mr. Allen's sentiments reflected the long-fought struggle of the Southwest community for build-first. DCHA must not approve the RAD for Greenleaf Senior until it comes into compliance with the provision of the Moving to Work Agreement on the substantially the same provision, adheres to the RFQ, conducts and concludes a full investigation of the Greenleaf procurement process, and has received unqualified HUD approval of the FY twenty-four Moving to Work Plan. Due to time limitations, I will provide my full testimony in writing for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sharon Lawhorn. Sharon Lawhorn. Okay, I'll move on. Emerald Wilson Bay. Emerald Wilson Bay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the list.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, um, all of the residents and, and public members who testified. We appreciate your, um, taking the time to give us your feedback. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the resolutions, and, um, so there are three resolutions dealing with submitting applications to HUD, uh, but I'm gonna go, um, start with Resolution twenty-three forty-three, which is regarding an IT contract, and then do Resolution twenty-three fifty-one, um, which is to, um, uh, charge our tenant accounts receivable for vacant units. So Resolution twenty-three forty-three, Director Jenkins, do you have any comments on that? This is the IT.
What is IT? Sub, subcontract for IT?
Yes.
Do you want me to speak or do you want the committee to present it?
Was it?
It was.
It was the Senator Jones who was. Okay, I know Commissioner Jones is not here. That was her.
She's not here. She has charged me to speak on her behalf if necessary. I was hoping that it was.
I thought you were gonna present it, and then I would ask.
You just presented, and I can move forward.
Uh, I, I think the thing that is most outstanding from our conversation, um, and we were in support of this resolution, was, uh, the importance of articulating in the resolution, uh, that, uh, it would go to competition, uh, over the next year. And so, yeah, within the next year. And so that was, um, an issue that our committee had flagged upon, you know, during our review, and that the Housing Authority has, um, updated the resolution language.
So this, this is a, um, this is sole source.
This is a sole source contract for continued services that they're providing, because they, they've integrated with our, with us, and it's vital that they provide these services. We originally, as Commissioner stated, we were looking for a two-year agreement, and we reduced that to one year to allow us to go out and procure a, a, a new vendor to come on, or the same one, and allow us to build capacity within the Housing Authority to do these services as well. So we're looking at going twofold here. Build capacity within the IT department and a short-term contract sole source, so there's continuation of services and the Housing Authority i- is not harmed during this period, so then we can put out, uh, some proper procurement.
So, uh, having heard that, uh, I'll ask for a resolution. I'm sorry.
You wanna wait?
Yeah. Uh, a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash forty-three. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, questions or comments?
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure I understand this, because I, I think, and I wanna make sure that we characterize this correctly. This feels to me like we've inherited a little bit of a mess, and so we need to clean it up, which is never the most fun job for a board, but I wanna make sure that, just given some of the sensitivities about past practices. So my understanding is initially, this contract with Bailey was not properly procured, either, either, I don't know if it was improperly sole sourced or just improperly procured from the get-go, but I just wanna note for the record, we've inherited this contract, right? Is that?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And so we are now in a position where we could let them go and, and, and reprocure this and deal with a, a, a period where we didn't have anybody supporting us, but that would not be in the interest of the agency to keep us moving forward on the integration.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, this, this particular vendor supports our network and systems infrastructure, which is critical to keeping the agency running. That is sort of the, I would say, one of the core, uh, pieces of IT. So, you know, if our network were to go down for any reason, we would be without any support.
Right.
And the agency would go.
Yeah, so the, the consequences seem significant to me. I just, I, I just wanna sort of say for the record, it just, I feel like we all are a little bit over a barrel. We don't really have a choice, um, but I think I agree with, with you and with the committee that so long as we are, you know, instructing staff very clearly that this cannot continue in and, you know, without following the full process, you know, that we've got to make sure that that happens in a timely way.
Yeah, and we are fully on the same page, and that's why we're putting this forth.
Right, okay.
And that reproduces the very conversation we had.
We were very adamant about that. When we put forward, uh, we had to go back in the day and put that language in there, Commissioner.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's, it's never fun to be in this position, but we gotta do what we gotta do. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, um, we have a motion on the table, so we have a roll call vote for Resolution twenty-three dash forty.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Chairman, Mr. Chair, you have six yes. The resolution is approved.
Yes, thank you. So we're gonna move on to Resolution twenty-two twenty-eight dash fifty-one. This is to charge off.
This is to charge off of the public housing bad debt. Can you play up our game? Will we have Ms. Reed?
I, I, I can.
The way things work is typically the committees present, that's why.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, uh, excuse me, in the absence of, of Commissioner Reed, uh, this, uh, this resolution is to write off, um, about eight point three million dollars of, of, of bad debt. Um, to be clear, bad debt is usually, these, these are already reserved for, um, so there is no impact on the financial statements. Um, additionally, this, uh, by writing this off does not mean that, um, that there will not be continued efforts to collect, um, but this is to clean up, uh, the system. Now, in the conversations also, uh, you'll note that this go, these receivables that go back to twenty eighteen, um, and so, uh, moving forward, there was discussion in committee about, um, about doing this process really quarterly, because this should be a quarterly process, but for various reasons, um, this hadn't been done, uh, since twenty eighteen, and I, um, I can kind of let John or Director to kind of speak to that also.
Yes, a- as you stated, these are mostly for accounts where residents no longer reside in the properties, and we've tried to collect the, the, the outstanding monies, and were unsuccessful, and now we wanna write this off our books, just to clean our books, but we are so, also gonna refer this to a collection agency and continue to pursue collection of these funds, which HUD allows us to keep. Well, typically, when you refer these out to a collection agency, their agreement is fifty percent for them, fifty percent of to us, or anything they collect. So we are gonna refer this debt out, and our current policy is to bring this to the board every quarter. So going forward, as the committee strongly suggested, and we agreed that we will bring this every quarter to the board to write off, so it doesn't accumulate to such a large number. So this is more of an accounting of being to clear the book, so we're not carrying this bad debt forward. But bad debt is a budget line item that you will see in the budget every single year, because this is, this is anticipated. John, was there anything to add?
Oh, but I mean, you and Commissioner Clay addressed all the good points here. I just wanna reiterate that these are, um, uh, balances for tenants who are no longer in public housing. We're not writing off any balances for, uh, residents that are still with us, because those will be, uh, uh, offered the opportunity, uh, to, uh, pay back those balances through a tenant's payment or repayment agreement.
The other key point is that these will be referred for collection.
Yes, that's right. So. And these families cannot reapply, because this also goes to HUD debt's old module, so it would follow them if they ever tried to apply.
If they moved to another city and tried to apply, right? Okay.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. So can we get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-one?
Commissioner Harris, motion to approve twenty-three fifty-one.
Second. Any further discussion? Uh, then we'll have a roll call vote on twenty-three fifty-one.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Silla.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have six yes. The resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you. So again, we have three resolutions dealing with applications to, to HUD for, um, RAD or demo dispo. And let me just start off by saying, obviously, from what we heard from residents today and, and what I've seen with emails from residents, there's obviously a disconnect between, uh, what we've, we as the board have seen and staff have proposed, is proposing, and has given the board at, at different points over the last year or two years. I've been on the board a little over two years now, and I've seen various plans for, for Greenleaf and, and Lincoln Heights and so forth. Uh, but to continually hear that the residents don't know what's going on and, and are not aware of what's happening, uh, is a concern. I mean, you know, there's definitely a disconnect between, uh, what the staff is putting forward and, and proposing, and the, I guess, the ability to, to, uh, convey that, uh, to the residents. And previous, in previous iterations of the board have passed resolutions outlining, uh, our, uh, I guess, how we would implement RAD, and it included things, uh, resident protections, uh, and, and so forth. So, uh, as we talk about these resolutions today, I just would like to hear from staff, you know, how, how you are addressing the, particularly the resident concerns and, um, making sure that there are not just two, because I think in the, uh, resolution or, or the background information, it referred to two resident, two required resident meetings, and two required residence meetings are certainly not enough to, to really, uh, convey what is happening and to make sure that residents understand, uh, what is happening. So, uh, as we get into these resolutions, we can, we hopefully talk a little bit about that. I mean, we've been here a lo- a long time today, and it's getting late, but this, this is clearly, uh, a really important issue. So I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Commissioner Murphy, who chairs the Development, Community Capital Projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. I think as we go forward, it's gonna be helpful for staff to weigh in on and potential if there are miscommunications that are happening, and it'd be good to understand what's going on and how we can make sure that we clarify those. The first one, uh, that we're here to talk about, uh, is, uh, a proposed RAD conversion of the Greenleaf Senior Building. So you will recall, Greenleaf is made up of five different properties. This is the one that is just, we're just today talking about the senior building. Greenleaf has been, the, the prior board did approve, um, uh, master development agreement, uh, last year to review an entire redevelopment plan for the site. So this is sort of one of the steps that is, um, proceeding in that process. What we're talking about today in this resolution is request for, to apply to HUD for a RAD conversion to support a rehab in place. Um, and we can hear from staff on, on what that's gonna look like, but we are not expecting any displacement from this site. We're expecting minimal relocation, um, while this occurs, but what, what this will do will free up the funds to rehab two hundred and eleven units, um, and improve the quality of life for the folks living there. There, as the chairman alluded to, there have been two community meetings, um, for those residents. We can hear from staff about how those went, but, um, I think that the, and the other piece that staff has, has explained to us is, by proving this today, we will help m- move forward some of the other pieces of the redevelopment, um, that we think is important to make sure that our residents are living in, in great housing, um, as I know we all want them to. So I think, um, I hear the concerns, and I think we want to address the concerns. I think we also just wanna make sure that we're clear that we're trying to do this because we're trying to improve conditions for folks, and that there are some consequences about, um, not proceeding with, with things or delaying things. So I think I'm mindful of that as well. So I think, John, I see you on, hopefully you're not on mute. Can you address some of the questions about what information has been provided to residents at, at Greenleaf Senior?
Yeah. Yeah, I can go. Um, so the first thing is, I'll say is that we are in just very challenging economic conditions, and this is the first step that will allow us to free up capital to move forward with. I heard someone mention, uh, that we did not move first with, move with a build-first program. The senior building will allow us to move forward with this project without having significant, uh, relocation or, uh, moving the residents off-site. And what, what will happen is, we will renovate the senior building. That will be the first location that will be, uh, that will enable the second phases of the project to move forward. In regards to, uh, our resident engagements, we have had several. We are, have been in communication with the residents of, uh, Andre Goul, our A V P of Development, can speak to the dates and times of those, but, um, I want to be clear, we are engaging our residents at all of our properties, and we are informing them. We are informing the resident councils there. And Andre, if you could just speak to the specifics of when we have engaged the residents there at Greenleaf.
Thanks, John. Uh, Andre, I'm the A V P of, uh, Development. Uh, we did have, uh, meetings, uh, with residents, uh, both in, um, S- September and August, uh, at Greenleaf Senior. Um, there were no real significant questions. Uh, the big piece was that we needed to let residents know that we intend, uh, to do, uh, rehabilitation in place, and that they would not have to move out of the building.
Thanks, Andre, uh, the chairman's stuff. Uh, do folks want to chime in on this? Any questions or concerns, maybe first members of the committee and then the rest of the board?
Maybe this is just a, um, comment about, um, it, it really feels to me like, um, as a board and also as a residency, we are stuck between a rock and a hard place. Um, it feels to me that we're, uh, receiving a lot of feedback about how we need to slow down and maybe even stop, um, our redevelopment efforts entirely. And then, at the same time, uh, we get pushback about how slow we are in terms of moving housing redevelopment. I'm thinking about the DCist article around how we only have three active redevelopments, and we need way more than that in order to realize, um, the redevelopment efforts that are appropriate for a city of our size and a housing authority that has like the housing stock that we do. Um, and so, it, um, it, it, it feels to me, just where we are in the city, that we need to be marching forward and very quickly on redevelopment efforts. Um, I, I do recognize we need to balance this with resident concerns. But in this particular case, where it's, what, what is being reported to us is that minimal displacement, minimal relocation requirements, I mean, it feels like it's a no-brainer. Um, so I, I'm not quite sure what the disconnect is with, um, the general public and, and, um,
Yeah.
what we're hearing and, and like the sentiment. I mean, I feel an urgency to.
And I can't.
On these projects.
I can't help but wonder sometimes if it's, you know, Greenleaf is a large development, and it's not, not everyone on that development is necessarily hearing about the senior RAD conversion. They may have heard a rumor, and they wonder how it applies, and so some of this, I can't help but wonder, is related to miscommunication. If you're not in that senior development, it may not be that critical that you know this is happening. But that may be what some of the buzz we're, we're hearing, so.
I'm gonna chime in. The problem is, it's not what you do, it's how you do it. You are, even if you think it's for a day or week, you are taking people out of their homes. And then you tell them things that are not true. Because you say you're going to develop this, and it'll take two years, and it'll take ten years. And these are seniors. Uh, the problem is lack of engagement from the, uh, agency. You cannot go into a property and think you can time a one-hour meeting and change people's complete lives. Or, because I do go to the properties, when we're asking questions of the agency's representative, and they say that one line, "I'mma get back to you." You have to think about it. Now, I agree that we do need to move forward, and we need more housing. But it's the way you're treating people like they're cattle, like they're items. Now, let's think, have we talked about relocation? Have we met with those resident councils representatives and say, "We want to do this"? And if I'm in a, uh, an apartment and it needs to be renovated, are you gonna renovate one and then move me? Are you gonna renovate all around me? And suppose my apartment, like, um, Ms. E was saying, how when we move, we have to do those who are already there? It's more than just some words on a paper, paper. And people feel disconnected, and that's why you feel all this hostility. They feel like they're just a cash cow. Because again, how can, we're sitting in here in this board meeting, and it takes more than an hour. And you're gonna take me from my home, and you're gonna tell me all that in an hour. And then what type of information are we giving? Are we telling them, "This is the process, this is how RADs work, these are some of the options, this is what you can do"? And, and the part that kind of got me a little disheartened is what I really dislike a lot, is when you have these prime real estate, and you want them to move so bad that you force them with these mandatory and safety transfers. And because people talk, say, "If I've gotten a mandatory or a safety transfer, I'mma tell you how bad it is, I'mma tell you how bad it is." And then we're all in fear, because we don't hear, "This is for your good." How come we're not involving the citywide, or the Commissioner Blackson, or myself, in letting us go out and speak with them? How many years you know this was happening? How did it take all those years? It's like we do the paperwork first, then we worry about the people. And I think that's the disconnect. I think if someone spoke with them and told them, "This is for your better good, it's gonna make your life easier, you're gonna have appliances, you're gonna have a better way to get around and be mobile in your building." But you come in and think, "I'm listening," and all you say is, "Well, we need to hurry up and build, so we gotta rush you out." But who are you billing for? Aren't you billing for me? So why are you rushing me and not letting me get, uh, knowledge and a understanding? We, as an agency, has to be more explicit, and we have to be more careful of what we do and how we do it. Because then, as you hear, we keep hearing so many bad things when we're doing so many amazing, great things. But people always remember the bad. That's just my opinion.
Well, if I can chime in, uh, Commissioner Chairman Skinner, everything that the agency is doing, specifically the Office of Capital Programs, is geared towards improving the conditions of our residents, whether it's the modernization that we're doing, the make-ready units, and ultimately the redevelopment. And redevelopment is our last, our last approach, because of course it is the most, um, invasive on our residents. So we, in O C P and the Office of Capital Programs, we, during all of our planning, the first thing we think about is the impact on our residents. And that's why we are taking the approach to modernize, to improve the conditions strategically, so that we can help the residents. So I've heard everyone's concern, we hear your concerns, and we're moving as fast as well as, as thoughtfully as we can to make sure the residents have the conditions that they need, but also make sure that we move to get more done.
So, so I think the, the issue is really about communications. So when, when you have the, the meetings, uh, with the residents for any of your, your given properties, who actually goes out and makes their presentation? Is it you? Is it Office of Resident Services?
It's the combination of the Office of Capital Programs and Resident Services.
So I, I know, I guess, what I've seen in, in previous, um, uh, positions, and I think even here in, in the district, is, um, using outside companies who kind of specialize in, uh, working with, uh, community partners and working with residents. And they have a way of kind of, I guess, conveying the information that's more, uh, understandable, so that, uh, you know, residents can, can get a better picture of what's going on. Have we ever used any outside, um, parties to work with us?
So I'm not sure if we've used outside parties at, uh, Greenleaf, but we, we use outside parties at Langston Terrace during our resident, during our master planning. So we, there is, that is an option, and we will take that into consideration.
I'm, I'm gonna put, uh, Director Jenkins on the spot, since, since he's been around a long time, and has, and has seen this happening all over the, the country.
Just heard me whisper into, uh, Lori here.
What have you seen in terms of how the, the approach is with dealing with the residents and communicating what's going to happen with, to the residents?
Not seeing the actual communication that happened on this, for this one. I think a lot of housing, not a lot of housing authorities, you cannot do the bare minimum. To require two meetings is not enough. Um, I think we need to relate to the community in which we're looking to do these projects, and determine how much communication is needed based on that community, instead of just saying, "Okay, we're, we're checking a box for two." So one is, we have to do more engagement through Resident Services. Find out from the community how many meetings that you actually need, morning, night, afternoon. And you don't need to outside, contractors outside, you just need to have plain language when you're presenting it, and presenting it multiple times, and following it up in writing, putting flyers in their window, I mean, in their, um, mailboxes and things of that nature, to make sure that we're communicating to them about these upcoming changes. Um, what, that's what I've seen in the past. I've seen it, it's, it happens in various ways across the country. But the, you can never go wrong with more communication. And where we, what I have seen a lot of pushback is when housing authorities just do the minimum. And that never works, in my opinion. It just never works. We have to over-communicate, especially when you're talking about relocating people from communities. It's not just their home as far as their, their apartment. This is their community. This is all they know, most of them. And you're, we're relo- trying to relocate them to another part of town, which we may think is, "Oh, we're just putting you in a better area," or "We're giving you a voucher." But we gotta remember that this is their home. These are the linkages that they created within the community. So we have to over-communicate and under-promise, meaning we can't say it's gonna be done in two years. I never give hard numbers on when development's gonna be done, because you never know. Change orders, construction, um, supply chain issues. So I would caution us away from giving hard deadline dates on when this thing is gonna, when things are gonna be done, and over-communicate. And we've seen that work well. But, um, if you like go through like a choice neighborhood, if you do engage, uh, a people partner, like a urban strategies or something, they're very good at going out, doing a lot of outreach to the families and letting them know what's going on.
Can I, Andre, can I ask you a question? I just want to make sure we're listening to the people who are most impacted by this specific project. And so what kind of feedback, if any, did you get from the seniors and the resident council when you met with them? What, what are we hearing from them?
Uh, I, I think the biggest question that came up was, is my, uh, rent, uh, gonna change? Uh, we reassure them that with RAD conversion, they will continue to pay, uh, thirty percent of their, their income. I think that's the, the biggest question that comes up, is what happens when you, uh, change that subsidy?
So, so less concern about relocation or things like that?
There were some questions. Uh, we would have to, um, answer those questions after we've really worked out exactly how residents are gonna move within the building. Um, but they want to know how much disruption is gonna be in that building and how they can be shielded from it. And once we get further along in the planning process of an actual rehab, um, we can give more of those, uh, details.
And could I?
Murphy, I think I just want to reemphasize that.
Hello, can anyone hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Hi, this is Keith Penney. Uh, I've been listening. I've been listening to the entire meeting. Um, and I wanted to chime in on the whole robust resident engagement, um, because I hear it loud and clear, and obviously I've done some of this stuff before. And I think that it, Dorian was dead on with the fact that, you know, you really, really, really need to be engaged with residents from, from A to Z. And some of the things I've done in New Orleans, uh, we were down at the Petreen as well as down Alexandria, we include the residents from the beginning of the process, including picking the development partners, up until the end of the process, where the, you know, they're engaged in, you know, the development of the units, and you know, the, the storyboard of the units. So resident engagement is extremely, extremely important. And I, I'm hearing it loud and clear on this meeting tonight, that resident engagement is something that needs to be enhanced. Um, and that you, he's right, you need to go overboard with these meetings. We do, we do monthly meetings now. I got three developer projects in the pipeline in Alexandria. And we do monthly resident engagement meetings to keep the residents engaged, keep them informed, and to make sure they understand the schedule. Now, I heard Dorian say about under-promising the schedule, and to some degree, he's right, but you still want to give a schedule. Uh, uh, and, and what you want to do is update it as you go along. That's why the meetings on, on a monthly basis is so important, because he's right, you know? Listen, we never saw the interest rates going through the roof, and, 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 you know, now you got gaps in funding and that kind of stuff that, that may affect the schedule. But the reality is, all the residents want to do is be included in the conversation and, and, and be involved in the process. And if you do that, you can't lose, because they're always informed. And what I'm sort of hearing now is that, 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 there's a disconnect here. Um, and as the incoming, obviously, E D, you know, I'm excited about working with the residents and working with them from, from the very beginning to the end, because, you know, we, we need to make sure that they're, this, these are their neighborhoods too. And they have a say-so on what happens and how it happens. And so I just want to say that. I didn't want to interfere with the meeting. I just wanted to listen for the most part, but this, this piece of it is too extremely important. The other stuff, we can work out once I arrive, but this one is so, this is near and dear to my heart. That's why I want to make sure I, I gave about two cents on this whole process and how it works and, and how I operate. And, and, and most resident leaders will tell you, you know, "I include the residents from, from A to Z, and it was very transparent, and we want them involved in the entire process about what's gonna affect their lives going forward." So I just want to say that, and now I, I, I'll mute myself again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Better. So, so John, let, let John, John was going to respond, so go, go ahead, John.
No, I don't, I think, uh, the incoming director, he, he may.
I'll respond to him, but just respond.
No, I think he laid the, the approach that we need to take, but I will continue to say that, you know, we, we are looking at the properties. We're taking residents' concerns under consideration, and specifically at Greenleaf, um, we will, this is the first step. So I want to get back to what this resolution is for. It's for the RAD conversion, that the first step that will allow us to be able to take a look at the financing plan to determine how the rehab is going to happen. And once we have that in place, then we can inform the residents of, okay, we've, we've got the first step. This is how the rehab is going to happen within the building, and based on how the rehab needs to happen, this is how the relocation within the building will happen.
And this is the first step. I was gonna say, this is the application.
Right.
Well, once, if it's approved, then we definitely need to go back and reengage with the residents as we get a, a, a timeline put together on what's gonna happen when, and get their feedback and get their input, and work collaboratively on that. So this, again, this is the very first initial step, we, I mean, not the initial step, but we need to get approval first.
Yeah.
Get the approval from you, get the application to, to approve for us to submit the application.
That's well said.
Yeah, so, so again, in terms of miscommunication, sometimes what happens is, you know, we have this resolution, the residents think, "This is it." I mean, everything's done when we submit this application. But you're right, this is really just the beginning.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a lot of, of planning, a lot of design work to be done, where the residents can have input.
Yes.
Can I, can I add, though, I, what I keep hearing from residents, though, is it felt to me like there is an understanding that development takes time. And so maybe the conversation we could or should be having with residents are around the principles for our approach to rehab. So maybe we can actually have a conversation around, what are the general kinds of strategies that we can employ for minimizing relocation to another property? Uh, figuring out whether it's best for us to work around you, um, you know, or move you into, uh, another unit on the same property versus moving you to another property entirely. So maybe there's like, uh, a conversation around principles that we can agree on, that we can talk to residents about, like, the trade-offs, so that we better understand what things they are willing to trade, um, i- in consideration of these rehab projects. So, so that we're working in partnership with them, and they feel like we're taking their perspective and prioritizing that as we move through the development process.
I, I just want to say for the record, I, I don't think, so we heard lots of feedback today. I didn't hear anybody from Greenleaf say, "I'm a Greenleaf Senior resident, and I don't want you to move forward on this today." I did not hear that. I heard some people saying, "Things are not where they should be at Greenleaf, and you need to do better." I heard, "Be careful about the redevelopment," I heard, but I didn't hear anything that said, "Don't move forward to rehab the units of two hundred and eleven seniors." I didn't hear that. And I, and so that's why I'm comfortable moving forward. That's not to say we can't do better in other aspects, but just as far as this resolution goes, there was no specific pushback.
And I have no desire to slow us down. I actually think redevelopment is critical. I'd like for us to move faster, so my comments are just to help build a better kind of atmosphere in which we can move faster.
So, so again, just piggybacking on that, yeah. So, so I agree, we definitely need to move forward, but we need to do better in communicating and, and, uh, for me, I think I just want to make sure that we have that commitment from the staff in particular to, to do a better job of communicating, uh, have meetings once a month, once a week, whatever it takes to be able to, to, uh, uh, communicate what we're doing and get the residents on board. I mean, when, everybody's not going to agree, but at least they've been informed, and they know what's happening. So, so with that, uh, can we get a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash forty-two, uh, for application?
I have a one question.
I'm sorry. Let me, let me put the motion on the table, then, then ask question. Let me, let me put the motion on the table, then, then ask questions.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, questions, comments?
Just give me a definition, Director Jenkins, of in-place renovation. I hear two things. One, people are gonna be moved to other units. And another, that they're gonna be developed, we're gonna, the rehab is gonna be around them, living there.
If they're in place, then what, what we've done, what I've done in my past, we've gone floor by floor. So we looked at vacancies, and then we said, okay, this, this floor is vacant. We're gonna move people into this while we work on the second floor. And then it's a continuation of that. So they're in place, they're not relocated to another public housing site or a hotel or something like that.
And we, I think we're doing some of that now. Aren't we doing something like that at judiciary?
Oh, correct. We're doing that at judiciary. We're not doing floor by floor. We're doing actually stack by stack, which means based on the, being able to relocate certain segments or sections of the building so that the, the residents will be still relocated within the building, but within columns along the building.
Any other comments or questions on twenty-three dash forty-two? If not, then can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. I believe we have Commissioner Harris on our WebEx now. Commissioner Harris?
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Mister Chair, you have six yes. The resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Murphy, then we have twenty-three dash forty-eight, which is Lincoln Heights Richardson.
Yes, Richardson dwellings. So this is similarly complex. Yeah, some of the themes that we heard were echoed today. So this is a complex one, and I wish we had more time and could show some of the slides that the committee saw because I think they put it in context. It's a little bit hard to do in words. But this is part of the, the Choice Neighborhood Project that we aspire to do out at Lincoln Heights Richardson dwellings. I think it was, it's been a new community site since two thousand and six. So it's, redevelopment of the site has long been planned. This is, we are being asked to authorize an application for demo-dispo of certain properties, I think it's two hundred and some units, two hundred and seventy-three units, to demolish them. It's a, a, a large facility with a large number of buildings with quite a few vacancies in certain buildings. And those are the buildings we're talking about today. The residents in those buildings, and we've heard this before when we did our community tour where there's a lot of vacancies, it leaves room for Vermin and other, you know, to, to sort of take over the, the empty units. And I, from what we hear, that's what's happening in the units that we're proposing to demolish. So we've got a large number of units with a small number of people in them who are experiencing serious problems. We have an opportunity to consolidate those folks in renovated properties and rehab properties that will improve their quality of life while we demo, propose to demo-dispo these units, which will facilitate the longer-term redevelopment of the site. And this will, I think this plus another property that was already previously demolished would be the Phase One site. So, you know, this is one step that we're being asked to take to enable the agency to, to have some progress on the site. It is not without some disruption to people's lives, and, you know, I fully acknowledge that. And that's a hard thing in many cases to ask people to do. But what the staff is telling us is this is going to move people into better units where they will have fewer problems and enable the agency to move forward on a larger-scale redevelopment. So let me stop there. John, do you wanna speak to that? Do you wanna speak to how many units were, or how many families were relocating? And the communication that has been done? I know there were some of the comments suggested that people haven't heard. It's always hard to know how much credence to give comments like that, but just to take your perspective.
First comment I'll respond to, I think it was the comment about a previous demo-dispo application. And that is correct. However, that application was rescinded. And it was rescinded because just of the status of the market and the, the area of the community was not ripe for redevelopment at that time. And that was a phase-by-phase application at that time. However, based on our Choice Neighborhood Initiative as well as being able to move forward, we've been talking to the other district agencies to read, take a look at redeveloping the community. The timing is right. And again, this is just the first step. Again, the first step is the demo-dispo application. And that, in conjunction with our Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant, we'll be able to take a look with the work that we're doing with the Make Ready Campaign as well as the Urgent Needs Campaign of being able to get the conditions of the property suitable so that the residents will have proper housing on that site. And in regards to the engagement, Andre, I believe you spoke to the Richardson, we, the Richardson resident council leader out there?
Yes, we did. And then we also had meetings with the residents. And that, and that was in August, so we're now in October. So there, there is some disconnect with the, the actual timing of when the resolution actually is moving forward.
Which again goes to what your new director was saying about continuous communication. Because, you know, the bureaucracy of pushing this paperwork forward is two months removed from the meetings to where we are now. So that's, even lends to us having more frequent communication.
John and Andre, if we do approve this today, can you all commit that we'll communicate to the residents in short order about that this was approved and what this means for them?
Yes, we can do that. And I think you asked the question about the number of residents that had been relocated. The team informed me it was a hundred and eight that had been relocated.
Near left. I, that was what I was really trying to understand, is how many people will still need to be relocated beyond this?
You had that exact number? We can, I can get you that number. I'll, I'll follow back up. But to your point, I will, we will discuss internally a plan moving forward of how we can engage more frequently at the sites where we have active plans for redevelopment to make sure that the residents are better informed.
And I also wanna make the point that no residents will be required to move off the prop, their properties, that units are being prepared for them on their properties for them to, to move to voluntarily.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Because we're, we're talking whole buildings with just one family. So we need to remove that family because it's an eyesore between gangs, drugs, and other things. We need to remove them, put them in a community that's within the community so they're safer and we can move forward with this.
So, so can we get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three forty-eight? This is submitted an application, a demo-dispo application to, for Lincoln Heights and Richardson dwellings.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Then we'll have a roll call vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Mister Chair, you have six yes. The resolution is approved.
Okay, then the final resolution is regarding the Arthur Capper Senior Building. And again.
Yeah, this one is, is, is hopefully a little less controversial. This is a, a new property. Folks may remember there was a fire in this building, and it was rebuilt, and it's been fully occupied since two thousand and twenty-one. And so we have happy residents there. This is essentially a financial transaction for them. It will not change their situation in, in any way, really. It just will free up the resources to strengthen the financial position and maintenance and management of the building. So this is, I would say, sort of as close to a no-brainer as it gets. There have been several resident meetings with folks. And as I understand it, you know, Andre and John chime in here. But as I understand it, people realize this isn't gonna change anything for them. It doesn't change their rent. It doesn't make them change units or anything like that. So it's, it's really just a, a motion that will allow us to improve the financial position of the building. Is that correct, John and Andre?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So can you just take a minute to explain a little bit more about why, why we're doing it and how this is gonna improve the financial condition of the building?
So currently, the building is ACC, and we will be moving to a RAG conversion, which will increase our rental subsidy. Essentially, if we had a pro forma, if I'd be able to show the pro forma, the annual increase for the properties would be right at seven hundred K, which will be an increase of seven hundred thousand dollars. Currently, the income and revenue for the property is about fifty K, and I think we'll end up at seven hundred and fifty for a total difference of, increase of seven hundred K, which will be allow the property to operate more efficiently, potentially have reserves for any improvements that need to happen on the property and/or to take those, that increase in revenue to take a look at other opportunities within the portfolio.
And we also get admin fee?
Correct, yes.
Really a win-win for the building, for the, all of our properties and for the agency.
Any other comments? So can we get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash forty, I'm sorry, twenty-three dash forty-nine? So moved to convert Arthur Capper to RAG. So moved, second?
Second.
Any question, other questions, comments? We'll take a roll call vote of Resolution twenty-three dash forty-nine.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Mister Chair, you have six yes. The resolution is approved.
Thank you. I think that is all on our agenda for today. Are there any other issues coming for the board today? Here, Commissioner Silla, you wanna?
Not, not issues, but I just had some reflections from listening to the concerns from clients. It struck me that earlier when we were talking about InVision and certification, it struck me that it might be really helpful to have an incubator for entrepreneurial efforts. I don't know if we have something like that, that's already operating out of our programs. But I think I trust and believe that we have lots of entrepreneurial residents, that it's not just, I think it was Bishop who testified today. So I, I would really be interested in that. And then during the testimony about like work orders, I, I was thinking about the client portal that we are developing for rent and payment of rent and the Rent Cafe. And it always makes me think about, like, why we don't have a portal for clients to see the status of the work orders that they've submitted. Like, it just, it feels to me that if we're gonna be transparent and accountable, that clients should have access to the information about their unit, the work order, whether it was submitted or not. And, and for them to have a way of saying, you know what, this inspection was not correct. This description of the scope of work does not match my understanding of what's going on, et cetera. So I wanted to flag that. And then last but not least, around like the health and wellness, I mean respiratory illnesses. And I'm also thinking about like violence protection measures and how we should be thinking about that, like as a public health measure and thinking.
What's that?
Violence prevention.
Violence prevention, yes.
I know, and I did see, I'm very highly aware that like the stats on the violence around our properties is very minimal, and I appreciate that, that update. But it just, it just occurred to me when folks were talking about health and wellness that looking into, I think it's respiratory illnesses, violence prevention, and maybe like opioid-related fatalities that like are, I know, a hot topic in homeless services and that I assume are also probably relevant here. And so I, I just wanted to, like, highlight and underscore those comments.
Hey, can I ask one question? I thought about Arthur Capper. Is Arthur Capper D.C. Housing? Because I get a lot of complaints. And when they have emergency, it's a senior building. But when you call the work order number, you're not listed. Because I have called, I stayed up at night and called. So I'm saying when you, yes, when you call.
Say you're not listed. Arthur Capper's not?
Arthur Ca, yes, not us.
You mean the building itself?
The building itself. I have had several seniors who have called me late night. And I went through the extra effort to call down to the central number to get a work order. But you're not listed. Arthur Cappers is not listed, so they could not give me a work order. And I've said, please, just help me, can you? And they said, no, because you have a list that are strictly for seniors, and they are not listed. Then I tried their management number, and the lady, Alexa, whoever, I called for two days and I never got through anyone. So I, I just wanna throw that out. If it's mixed finance, how we can make sure, in a case of an emergency, we're still able to assist them.
That's privately managed, right?
Yeah, edge would, I believe.
But still, they, they have a work order system. They have to have a process for you, for the residents to call in a work order. And residents should be aware of it. And they're giving out the wrong number, or they're not giving out a portal address. That's a problem that we have to follow.
Yeah, because they, they give out a phone number, and I called that number to the maintenance person. And I called the number to who is the management. And I tried for two days. It was like over the weekend.
Any other comments from commissioners? If not, then the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, at one P.M. via WebEx. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at www.dshouses uber. The meeting is adjourned at four thirty-eight P.M. Thank you.